Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me turn my mic off. There we go. Good evening. My name is Vicki Smith and I am President of the City School District of Albany's Board of Education. On behalf of the Board, I welcome you all here tonight to our meeting. I'm joined in person by all seven members tonight. Start this side. Board Member Damros Mann, Board Member Tabitha Wilson, Vice President of the Board Anne Savage, Secretary of the Board Dr. Shador Shatur, and Member Ellen Crecci, and Board Member Hassan El-Menyawi. I also want to acknowledge our Board Clerk who works with us very diligently, Ms. Jedery Gail, thank you, and joined by her side, and we'll come back to this later, but Ms. Nakaya Tennants, good to see you back as well. And Superintendent, good evening, Ms. Thees, good to see you as well, our Director of Human Rights, Human Resources. And I see Mr. Karis, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finances in the back there, and Dr. April Prestapino, our new Director of Assessment Technology, and all that great stuff. Good to see you. And I believe that also online there Karen Bechtel and Lori McKenna are both our Assistant Superintendents. So good to see everyone and thank you for being here tonight. This meeting is being livestreamed and the instructions to view the meeting are available at albanyschools.org/boe. And we will show all relevant slides and documents in the virtual meeting screen as well as here also on our room. And again, you may access those materials at albanyschools.org/boe. And I want to just remind any of you, if you would like to make a public comment, the sign up sheets I think are behind to the far right there of the door, there they are. And so you may sign up if you'd like. And we welcome your comments and questions and concerns. And with that introduction, I invite those of you who choose to join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the- In addition to the Pledge of Allegiance, we always focus our meeting by restating the mission of the City School District of Albany, which is to work in partnership with our diverse community to engage every learner in a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. And I think Mr. Lesko and Superintendent will take it over from here. And Mr. Lesko, I apologize, good evening to you. Hate leaving people out. And Ms. Marie Cullahan, good to see you as well. Okay, please proceed.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. We're going to start this portion of the meeting, of tonight's meeting, with some very, very exciting news. It was late in the morning on Friday, December 1st, myself and what I thought was Marie, received an email from the State Education Department. And it was an email congratulating Marie and the Albany School of Humanities as being recognized as a school that achieved or had significant achievement on last spring's Math &amp; ELA assessments. And I called Marie and the call went to voicemail. And I called Marie's secretary and, oh, she's in there. I don't know why she's not answering the call. So Marie gets on the phone and I was very excited to share or to ask Marie if she read her email. And she said, no, 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 I've been in meetings and data meetings and all sorts of things. And I said, all right, I'll wait for you. You've got to go and check your emails. She goes, I don't have an email from you. I said, no, the email's from so-and-so at 10:52 a.m. I don't have an email from 10:52 a.m. And then I'm getting paranoid and I think Marie was a little nervous. She goes, you know, this is Maria Ash. Are you calling the right person? And I'm reading this letter. It said, I know you're Marie and I know where you work. And what happened was the State Education Department did not have Marie's full email address. So I forwarded it to her and I said, look, you're going to need a minute to read what I'm sending. And I hear it ding on the other side of the phone and she reads it. And we didn't say much. We said, oh, my God. And then I cried, Marie cried, we all cried. And essentially what happened was we were notified that the Albany School of Humanities was selected as one of two schools in New York State and one of 100 nationwide that had the most significant achievement in the country. And- So a little bit of how we got here. This is a- So, a little bit of how we got here, this is a federal recognition from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that was passed in the 1960s by then-President Lyndon Johnson. He created the Elementary and Secondary Education Act to provide additional funds to schools that serve students in poor communities for the sole purpose of closing the achievement gap in reading, writing, and math. In 1996, the Elementary and Secondary Act created a recognition program, a distinguished schools program, to recognize schools that achieve these goals. As a result, Marie and her team will represent the City School District of Albany in mid-February at the National Elementary and Secondary Act Conference in Portland, Oregon. The recognition is based on exceptional student performance, academic and academic growth. And as I said earlier, ASH was the highest or the school that achieved the most gain in New York State. State Education Department indicated that ASH had the highest level of academic growth of any school in New York State exams last spring. The criteria is that a school has to have a poverty rate of at least 35% for that year. As such, ASH has 50% of their students are considered economically disadvantaged. Schools must also demonstrate high academic achievement, which obviously leads to closing the academic or closing the academic gap, and the school has to have met or exceeded state accountability criteria. And obviously, ASH did all of those things. So, we had a really hard time keeping that under our hat, because we talked to Ron, we said, "We have got to tell the world about this." And what we landed on was having a faculty meeting on Monday. And I'm not a good secret keeper, but I kept that secret, and we brought the faculty together. And it was late on Sunday, I received a note from New York State Education Deputy Commissioner that he could attend to really share with the staff the significance of the award. So, we had a faculty meeting with juice and cookies, and Mr. Lesko is going to work with Ms. Cullahan and her staff to celebrate this and to recognize this outstanding achievement with our greater community. So, be on the lookout for a recognition that will take place with the school, Marie's team, our staff, certainly the Board, and other community and regional dignitaries to celebrate this outstanding achievement. So, with that, Marie, I'd like to give you the microphone and say congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. It's been a whirlwind of a week, but I'm so excited to have some members of my team here from ASH, because if we know anything, we know that it takes a village. And we didn't get here through some easy path. It's been a long, exciting, hardworking seven years, where every member of our team, students, families, staff, faculty, have all contributed to where we are today. And so, we said, "We're very excited to see where the next seven years go," and it's always going to be onward and upward for us. We have new goals in sight already, but we're just going to take a minute to really say thank you for acknowledging this award. We're excited, and we're grateful, and we can't wait to keep doing this work.
I am going to continue with the district highlights, and we have a second recognition item this evening. With our annual Transportation Department update on the agenda tonight, we wanted to take a few moments to highlight the work of one of First Student's exceptional drivers, Rashad Turner. Rashad has been- That is well deserved. Rashad has been recognized by both First Student and our school community for his excellent work. That includes his recognition last spring as our Special Education Parent Advisory Council Hero. I will turn it over to our Director of Transportation, direct Miles, and First Student Area General Manager, Joe Petrazak, to tell us more.
Hello, everyone. I can't say enough about my appreciation for Rashad, and I know we're here to recognize him for his role with our special needs students, but he handles so much more than that. Any task we throw his way, he accepts with a smile on his face, and he's just a perfect example of a driver being more than a driver. More importantly, he's a great role model and a positive influence for our students.
Yes, not only is he an exceptional employee, he also was our Driver of the Year two years ago for our area, so everybody at the location can't say enough about him. As a company, we can't say enough about him. What he does with the students on a daily basis is truly remarkable, and we thank you for everything that you do, and we appreciate it, and keep up the good work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brian.
And I'll turn it over to Rashad, if you have anything for us.
I just want to say thank you to the amazing School District of Albany, and the peers at Albany High School, everybody, all the students, everybody, wonderful, wonderful place to be.
And I just want to present this certificate in recognition of your commitment to our district and to our students.
And we have some guests from the audience who would love to come up and join us for the recognition photos. Before the recognition photos, we have one student who also would like to recognize Rashad.
Rashad, he done an amazing job with everything he done, and I want to say thank you for how he, um, he done for us, and I would, um, and I'd like for him to keep doing what he doing.
Everybody stay where you are, now we have the Board members and the Superintendent coming out and joining the picture. All right, that's everybody. Nobody's blank. Thank you. Our annual family engagement survey is now available for our parents and guardians to complete. This survey provides us with invaluable feedback that helps foster improved relationships and partnerships between families and our schools, relationships that are central to our students' success. You can visit albanyschools.org to complete the survey online, and paper copies also are available at all of our schools upon request. All survey responses are anonymous. We asked that there be one survey per household, and if you have students in more than one school, then please complete one survey per household for each of your children's schools. If you have any questions, please contact our Office of Curriculum and Instruction at 518-475-6060. And if you would like to complete the survey in a language other than English, please contact your child's school or our Office of E&amp;L and Refugee Services at 518-475-6147. And since this is the time of the year when Santa starts checking his list twice, I thought it was a good time to remind families of our schedule for the upcoming holiday recess. Friday, December 22nd will be our last day of school before we begin the holiday recess. All of our schools will be closed for the entire week of December 25th and on New Year's Day as well. Our district offices will be closed December 25th and 26th, open on December 27th and 28th, and closed on December 29th and New Year's Day. All of our schools and offices will reopen in the new year on Tuesday, January 2nd. And now, to conclude tonight's district highlights, it is our pleasure to introduce Principal Sophia Newell to tell us about the great things happening at Thomas O'Brien Academy of Science and Technology.
Hi. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. My name is Sophia Newell, and I'm the Building Principal of Toast, and this is my Assistant Principal, Megan DelSandro.
Good evening.
And so, thank you for allowing us this great opportunity to do a little bragging about our building, so we do appreciate it, thank you. Toast is an amazing school, and I cannot say enough great things about our building. And so, I'm off script right now, so please forgive me, right? But district vision, so, we definitely follow the district vision. The City School District of Albany will be a district of excellence with caring relationships and engaging learning experience that provides equitable opportunities for students to reach their potential, the district mentioned. We will work in partnership with diverse communities to engage every learner of a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. District goals, increase in achievement, enhance delivery of quality instruction, build the leadership capacity, empower families, and partners with our diverse community.
So, Toast's vision, mission, and goals align with the district's vision, mission, and goals. Toast, our vision is that we're a community school that provides equitable educational opportunities and cultivates nurturing relationships within a safe environment for all students to be successful. Our mission at Toast is to educate our school community through learning strategies that reinforce curiosity, discovery, observation, problem solving, inquiry, and creativity across the disciplines. Our four goals for this school year is to increase student achievement, enhance the delivery of quality culturally responsive instruction, partner with our diverse community, and provide learning experiences that are rooted in our science and technology theme.
So, I'm going to introduce our team Toast, but before I introduce my team, I just would like us to look at that lovely picture that was taken during our cleanup for Arbor Day. And so, that lovely lady in the middle is our PTA President, Catherine Gunn, and this is just a representation of all the collaboration that we do with our families in our PTA. So, as I already introduced myself, I'm Sophia Newell, Building Principal, Megan DelSandro. I have next to me is Deb Calvo McNicholas, who is my STEM teacher, Marlena Klein, who is my math and tech coach, and at the end is Michaela Townsend, who is our Community School Site Coordinator.
And who's not here is our-
Is Erin Harrell. Who's here is Spirit.
So, let me tell you a little bit about our demographic here at Toast. Overall, we have about 88% of our student population is black and brown, 26% is Asian, 41% is black, 13% about is Hispanic, and 8% is multiracial, and we have 12% of our demographic being white. We had a new addition to our school this year, so we have three 812 rooms and one 1511 room, which makes our student, our sped population about 16%. We have 69% of our students economically disadvantaged, 18% of our students are English language learners, and that number is obviously growing. And we have 309 students total in Toast, and I don't know if you remember from last year, we were only here about three months ago, but our, one of our goals was to increase- And I don't know if you remember from last year, we were only here about three months ago, but our, one of our goals was to increase enrollment. And I'm happy to say that this year we have over thirty more new students, so we hit that goal. Our set focus for ELA, we are continuing to focus on small group instruction and tier one planning, ensuring that we're utilizing the small group instruction and we're checking those during our class visits, and then making sure that our monthly tier one meetings occur.
For math, we are supporting the new curriculum of illustrative math, and also we are incorporating accountable talk signals during our math discourse.
For equity, we have both student and staff highlights. We're continuing our book study of The Guide for White Women Who Teach Black Boys with Staff. They are turnkeying PD from our book to, thank you, as Ms. Newell was showing us, yes. Vanna Black, thank you, to turnkey PD around equity during our principal PDs that occur once a month with our staff. And then for students, we have monthly events that our students take ownership in to increase student voice. This is our trend data for attendance. So year to date, we're at twenty-seven percent chronic absenteeism rate. Month to date, we're at twenty-seven percent, but happily, week to date, we're at twenty-two percent. So we're hoping that number starts to decrease as the school year increases. Overall, our daily average attendance rate seems to be pretty consistent, around ninety-three percent. And our chronic absenteeism, we've, we've seen a slight increase to about twenty-seven percent over the year.
As we all know, attendance do matter, so there are quite a few things that we do to try to increase and get students to school. We provide daily outreach. We have monthly incentives, assemblies, and trimester celebrations. We have attendance reminders and messaging. We do outreach over the summer. Mr. Harrell, along with Ms. DeLisandro and myself, we do scheduled meetings with parents. Also, we have weekly meetings to determine next steps. If there's attendance letters, if there's a call home, a home visit by our homeschool coordinator or the attendance officer. So we try to do a list of different things to increase students' attendance in school. You was on the left side. Go back.
Can you go back?
Go back.
As mentioned, we are a community school, and we currently collaborate with thirteen community partners to provide programs and services under the community schools model to our students, families, and staff. To date, there are a hundred and four students enrolled in one or more after-school program. The focus of these programs include soccer, lacrosse, tennis, engineering, and conservation. Three hundred and seven students participated in one or more in-school enrichment program to date. The focus of these programs include college and career readiness, conservation, and gardening. Some of the events that we have occurring this year include our new family orientation, open house, trunk or treat, and spooky steam night, family movie weekend, which is this weekend, camp constellation, invention convention, March Mathness, science fair, and the beautiful family and culture night.
Hi, it's us. Deborah Calvo McNicholas, STEM teacher.
And Marley Klein, math coach and tech coach.
So this year at Toast, we recommitted to what we started last year and we shared with you last year. All of our classroom teachers are engaging students using the district's mystery science and fosse resources as well as engineering design process for content-related project-based learning like the Harry's Habitat Project, which is a lost-in-space project conducted by Mrs. Leona's kindergarten class. And students are composing music in Ms. Richards' music studio using Chrome Music Labs. And I hear they have an AI music project coming up for our spring concerts. So be on the lookout. Weekly science lab classes have been expanded and now include second graders as well as all self-contained sped classes from two to five. And we continue to utilize scientific method, student-centered workshop models, and digital notebooks for all students. Thanks to the generous grant that we received from the Renaissance Corporation of Albany, Ozobots and Sphero Indi have been added to our building collection of coding bots and allow for usage across all grade levels for coding, pre-K through five. Sorry, I have a cold. We have established a lending library with a digital booking calendar, so teachers can check out any of these bots at any time with or without tech support from Marley and I. So, and I also want to shout out the Albany Tech coaching team for supporting that work, especially Sue Young McCoy, who makes herself available when we aren't available to work with classes.
In addition, grades kindergarten and first grade are using the Makerspace for regularly scheduled classes. So far, they've engineered solutions to real-world problems of earthquake-proofing structures, and they've now moved on to designing architecture in their community with holiday flair. We're recreating our very own Albany neighborhoods and landmarks through cardboard construction. In 2024, we will see the Makerspace open up to students in an after-school capacity and hopefully see the fruition of their own dream projects, including but not limited to 3D printing designs. Our student leadership team is currently composed of fifth graders. They write, anchor, and produce their own school-wide morning announcements. The team recently came up with AI writing and art challenges for grades three through five. You're perusing those examples right now. These samples came from Ms. Stewart's class, Ms. Richards' class, Ms. Chanick's class, and Ms. Kuncheski's class. And I just want to shout out that Ms. Kuncheski's class is first graders making AI art, so it's very exciting. You can also see the winners of the Coziest Room Contest and the Video Game Design Character Contest, which the writers of the announcements came up with on their own. Beginning next month, fifth graders will start training their fourth-grade replacements on the student leadership team. The new menu of STEM-based field trips across grades are in addition to, in addition to district-provided STEM field trips and have been developed through our partnership with Questar. These experiences will give our students an opportunity to engage with their city as part of New York State's Tech Valley with visits to facilities like Mezzonet and Albany, UAlbany's Nanotech Labs at no cost to our students. Toast students are now regularly engaging in AI prompting and art generation as well as block coding opportunities. Shout out to Ms. Stewart's class, who loves making AI art and coding. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Recently, our student AI artists had their work displayed during the winter contest, and the entire academy registered to participate in this year's Hour of Code with kindergarten and first grade students coding in class and after-school hours for grades two through five. In all, Toast had approximately a hundred and fifty of our students earned their Hour of Code certificates for 2023.
Yes. Next slide, please. Oh, that's it. So last year, one of our big goals was to expand learning beyond the walls and engage our community in educating our steamsters, and we've made a lot of progress towards this endeavor. This year's spooky steam night was even more successful than last year with hundreds of students and community members in attendance. This year saw a return of our favorite STEM activities like Toast's Portable Planetarium, and of course, our high school robotics team showed up with rain, and that is always a crowd favorite. This year, we were happy to also welcome visitors from UAlbany's College of Preparedness, Homeland Security, and Cybersecurity, as well as NAREC Model Schools Hillary D. and Goat, their humanoid robot. We're hoping to draw more young inventors into this February's Invention Convention, which we started last year. It is a competition based on the Henry Ford Foundation model, and this year we will run our event in tandem with our very first junior mini-code-a-thon, which will include a Black History Month-related challenge. This year, our work with Raddick Center continues with the addition of two pawpaw tree saplings to our community garden as well as a new program for our fourth graders aligned to science topics of study. We're looking, this is, this is a total, this is an ask if they're listening. We're looking to partner with our friends at Albany High to help build and expand our garden bed collection and afford each class the opportunity to utilize math skills in planning and cultivation of their own garden bed with an eye towards harvesting and preparing foods in the late spring.
That's your commercial?
Yeah.
Our partnership with Questar has also helped our Power Lunch get off to a great start. During Power Lunch, local experts in steam fields visit and give lunchtime chats to fourth and fifth graders. Most recently, we've been visited by experts from GE's local offshore wind team, and students were presented with the problem of establishing offshore wind turbines off the west coast of the US where the water is very deep. And I want GE to know, the fifth grade is on it, and some of them are brainstorming for Invention Convention. We are on track to hold our second annual camp constellation, an ELA and math-focused event where we will support our families with tools and activities to help our students shoot for the stars for testing season.
Saturday morning steam stream has also launched, literally. Our November session was all about taking to the skies and culminated in a successful helicopter build in our pajamas.
Toast is where steam lives. Sorry.
You forgot your math madness.
No, Michaela. Michaela talked about it.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Toast is where steam lives.
So with all those great things that's going on, we do have our challenges. And so with the addition of the new eight-one-two class, it has an impact on the building. We are still, like everywhere, are having staffing issues. We do have some vacancies that we haven't been able to fill, but it's just not a Toast thing. It's a district and a national situation. Also, we need to have more staff members trained in TCIS training and de-escalation considering that we do have an increase in regard to our eight-one-two classes. And so what we have did, what we did was we held with this support of PPS and special ed, we were able to hold a TCIS training during the day to support the need of our building, but also it was very difficult because we had to deal with coverage of staff that wasn't in the building. So we've been collaborating with special ed department regarding staffing issues that we're having with regarding to our sped classes. And so, like I said, this is just not a Toast problem. This is, it goes beyond Toast, and so, but, yes, that's where we are. But there are successes.
I was just gonna say, but successes are coming up next. We have seen consistent NWA growth that we hopefully will be seeing much more of in the winter and spring administrations. We have thirty-four percent of our students in after-school programs. We have seven staff members who were sent to Unbound Ed, which builds our equity work and growing capacity with building staff. We also have increased our participation in our staff equity team, and our student leadership is a big win for us this year. Shout out to our fifth grade teachers, Ms. Richards and Ms. Chanick, who have taken this on. They actually went to the Capitol and took a field trip there, and then our fifth graders wrote campaign speeches and held elections, and let me tell you, those speeches were so heartfelt. It was like such a feel-good moment, so shout out to them. On the theme of student leadership, student leadership and student voice, our student equity team meets bi-monthly and leads the No Place for Hate Initiative that we have continued since last year. Some of the work that they are slash will be doing includes our One School, One Book project based in the book The Proudest Blue by Ibtihaj Mohammed. Again, thank you, Ms. Newell. And they are currently running a canned food drive, so if you have any canned goods that you would like to drop off to Toast, that would be greatly appreciated.
Ninety-four Delaware Avenue.
Thank you. They help with our PBIS assemblies that are run by each grade level each month. And our goal this year for our student equity is to get star status for the No Place for Hate. We were recognized last year at the ceremony, but we missed the activities by one. You have to have four. We only had three. One of ours didn't count, unfortunately. So this year, we are adamant we are going to get that star student, our star status, excuse me. And without any further ado, our staff and some of our students would like to tell you how great STEM at Toast is.
I think students are really used to us giving them the information and not so much discovering the information for themselves. So the way we've structured and incented them in learning in how in Toast is we start with these questions on the event and investigate the purpose and then begin to pursue discoveries for themselves. It gives them a concrete experience to anchor the academic vocabulary and the knowledge and the concepts to. Because once you do it for yourself, then you have a need for the explanation, and it helps them to internalize that knowledge and carry it with them hopefully actively.
What I like about science is that we get, we get to do like a lot of stuff, like touching stuff, like birds and like snake skin. And I like to do scientific skills because they make me happy. And also the teachers make me happy too.
Science is really, I like science, it's like I was a little kid. I like all the building stuff. I like doing a lot of it. Once I get in touch with something, I can do it. It feels like, I mean, I always know I could do anything.
My favorite part of STEM science is that you can do things on your own. And why I like hands-on learning is that you can touch things that I can't get it, touch at home. I can discover like something like snakes in the air you know. Also touching and feeling it actually, and doing this with feeling it as well, that I can see it actually. Outside because it's exciting, it's fun, and it's pushing me happy.
Students' hearts really live in scientific discovery. They're curious about their world and how things work and their effect on things and the effect of things on them. And science and steam teaching and learning gives them an opportunity to discover that, investigate it more fully, and it, it's just such, there's such a high engagement level for them. It speaks to their natural curiosity. And if you attach the ELA and the math and all the other content to that natural curiosity, it's just something that they realize none of it exists in a vacuum, and it all works together. And it helps develop and deepen their understanding. Teaching science is cheating. They love it so much.
So out of the mouth of babes. Can I sing Beyonce now? So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to showcase our, our school. As you can see, we are Team Toast. We are very prideful about the work that we do, and we just really appreciate the opportunity to share them with you guys this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Newell. Okay, two, two things, I'm sorry. One, I have a question about the deadline for the food can drive.
Okay.
The deadline?
I think we have until the, I think it's.
They can go until next Friday. And it's all donated items benefit our community partner Trinity Alliance.
Okay, very good. And just one other thing. So I, I really liked the art that was being passed around. I know there's a QR code to, to hear the interviews of students, so I tried to do that and then my phone went off. But I was wondering, can we hold these or would you share, can you share the codes?
We can hold them, yes. I, well, if it's okay, I'd like to have them back for tomorrow. Can you look at?
Why don't you take them?
Oh, sure. Yes, yes, yes. Email you the codes. Yes, got it.
We can do that.
Okay, would you please? That'd be great.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I have one question. How do I enroll in your first grade AI art class? Because every time I've come to Toast, you guys have amazed me. Last time I saw the Makerspace, this AI art is amazing. And that's first grade. I want to be in that class.
So guess what?
You can come any.
We're a magnet school, so you have to file a completed application.
Thank, thank you all again so much. It was wonderful.
Do you want us to move the tables back or?
Okay, I'm good. I'm going to wrap up our, our district update. A number of really important pieces of information to share with our board and our community. And as we always do, we begin this portion of our meeting by restating our vision, mission, and goals. And tonight, have a number of updates. Some are going to be lengthy. Some are going to be lengthier than others. And I'd like to start with a safety update regarding some activities at both Tony Clement and our high school this week. Earlier this week, I put out an email to our school community highlighting some of the unfortunate incidences at, at both schools and in the general vicinity of both schools as well. That while some, some things happened within the four walls of Tony Clement and Albany High School, there was a lot of activity in the neighborhood. And unfortunately, this week, those incidents, both in and around the school community, necessitated a number of safety precautions be, be implemented. And we communicate them as quickly as we can so that everyone understands what the status is in, in any of our school buildings that have implemented those, those procedures. But specifically regarding Albany High, that had a significant heightened increase with law enforcement involvement this week. It's important that, that I underscore for everyone that when a threat comes to any school, we immediately share that with Albany Police. They share it internally or externally with other, other law enforcement agencies or other groups that specialize in, in certain threats or revealing certain threats. A lot of the threats that we've been receiving, not just this week, but in general, are really the result of social media activity and what we believe to be social media activity. So while we can't comment on ongoing investigations and, and can't always comment on the credibility of the threats, we treat all of them as though they're alive and they're real and that student and staff are at risk until we get the all-clear from Albany High. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that school administration or others are not the ones that are reviewing, they're not the only ones reviewing this information, but it, it does get shared with law enforcement immediately. And they do take over those investigations. We do have the opportunity or have the partnership with the City Police Department and have an SRO in the high school. They regularly visit our other schools. And when we are implementing a, a safety precaution, APD is not only present, but in many, many, many circumstances, they are the authority at that time. So we want to make sure families in, in our community understand that. Regarding some of the specific and, and really the significant of a lot of, significance of a lot of threats this week, a number of decisions were made by the high school administration with the support, obviously, from our district office. So over the last couple of days, the high school had staggered dismissal times, so that students taking buses, we're leaving at different times and students walking. And there were different color codes for students to leave the building at, at different times so that we didn't have an unmanageable situation, given some of the threats that, that we had heard. The Code of Conduct has been uniformly enforced. The Code of Conduct is, is really the behavioral expectation and consequence document of not only the City School District of Albany, but mandated in every single public school district in New York State under the SAVE legislation, which is a little over 20 years old. What will happen, starting tomorrow and early next week, particularly at the high school, Principal Jody Comifer is going to meet with, with all students in small groups to review, to review her expectations, but also talk about some of the situations that have happened. In many of these instances, it's, it's been student conduct, whether within the high school or student conduct outside of the high school. Students that are not attending our schools or, or those that have graduated or, or in many cases, young adults. So she's going to have a, a much more intimate setting with students to share expectations and what to do when you hear threats that come to the school. We say, we have said for a long time in public education and really in, in communities, if you see something, say something. There was an incident today where a student reported something that they thought they saw that, that warranted the school to go into a lockout. It was swiftly investigated and within 30 minutes, it was deemed not credible. So while those experiences are very unsettling and while it is easy to react to those safety precautions as here we go again, it really is out of precaution. It's out of, it's out of precaution for everyone in the building and also so parents understand what's going on. But oftentimes, we have to trigger those different safety precautions so a full and complete and thorough investigation can take place. It doesn't mean anything happened, it doesn't mean anyone is guilty of anything. It means that there are a lot of different eyes and ears that need to be on the scene to be able to make sure that everyone is safe so we can go back to normal activities. For those who have been in the high school, for those who haven't, make sure you, you try to get in there. But those who have been in the high school, we want to make sure that our students access the, the full complement of, of supports and programs in that beautiful renovated building. And so we act quickly, we act swiftly, but, but certainly, and I want to make sure I underscore this, we act with the advisement of law enforcement 100% of the time. Earlier this morning, the high school administration, as well as members of the, the district administration, we had three of our board trustees meet with a, a community coalition with a, a number of faith-based leaders. And the goal of that, that one-hour meeting was to identify short and long-term solutions and, and recommendations for further planning to make sure that we engage our community a little differently than we have in the past in terms, in terms of communicating expectations and, and being a supporter or a mentor to students that are in need. And so, over the next few days, we'll roll out some of those short and long-term strategies that the group agreed to at least kick off today. And I know that group is going to, going to continue to meet monthly. Student leadership groups at the high school, not just equity groups, but student government groups. And we identified a number of other student leaders that may not be identified by title or election, as it were, to participate in sending messages of, of strength and support and letting students know that while there is a lot of conflict out there, and we don't have to look far to find conflict, whether it's on our phones or television sets, and, and again, not just in the Capitol region, but all over the world, that conflict can be resolved in many, many different ways and it doesn't need to resort to, to threatening behavior or physical behavior. So we're going to work with this group and, and the esteemed leaders of our faith-based community to help us reinforce that. And they're going to, they're going to help us reinforce that as well in many, many different venues. They've offered their churches and temples and synagogues for district, district staff to meet with students and families in the setting that, that perhaps is a, a little more apropos for certain families and students to talk about things that, that are worrisome to them. And not everyone is, is comfortable having those conversations at school. So we're trying to find different venues to talk about real-life issues that, that we are seeing small vignettes being played out in our schools. And that's not the place for them, but we need, we need to find a more appropriate spot and place for students to go and, and talk about what their struggles are and what their frustrations are. This board and, and school community, for a long time, has supported, made significant investments in mental health staff and services. We heard earlier today about, about Toast and their Community Schools program and, and the, the presence of outside agencies coming in to work with students and families. And we need to continue to strengthen that relationship, particularly at this time for our high school students. The last thing I'll, I'll offer on this topic is what I said earlier at the meeting, is that this is not a phenomenon that is central to the City School District of Albany. We, perhaps we feel it a little bit differently, it stings us a little bit more, but this is something that I, that I speak with our superintendent colleagues, not only in the Capitol region, but across the state regularly. There is something that has been happening, it has been very quiet and perhaps under the radar for a really long time, and now it is on everyone's radar. And it's hard not to react when there are unfortunate incidents that happen in the community, that it's all related to a bigger picture. We received some unsettling news earlier, earlier this evening or late afternoon about just about some senseless activities that were taking place near a house of worship. And it's hard not to connect all of this together. We're going to let the police determine what those motives and motivations were. But we are all on heightened alert and I certainly appreciate the emails and the calls that I've received from families, those that we met on the sidewalk today at dismissal. And this is a, this is an opportunity for our community to rally together yet again to try to find creative solutions to issues that are trigger, triggering and hurting our kids. But I want to make sure that the community understands that we have a handle on it, that we work with leading agencies that have terrific talent in these areas, and that the community coalition will broaden to other business leaders and leaders in our community to support, to help us help students and families. And that this is not an Albany problem. I want to make sure folks understand that. It, it hurts us and gets our attention a little bit more, but this is sadly a conversation across all schools in our country these days. So I know there'll be questions, but if we're okay, I'll, I'll go through the, the whole update and we can cycle back. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Thies, our HR director. We are, she's going to provide some quarterly, oh, I'm sorry, Montessori. I want to provide an update, Kate was getting a little nervous, on Montessori. There was an, an incident where a student was injured just before Thanksgiving at Montessori. The result was, or, or the impetus was a, a branch from a tree fell down and injured the student. I'm proud to report that the student is home and the student is recovering. Mr. Powell, the principal, and, and his, members of his mental health team and the child's teacher and the number of others have been to the home a number of times to provide meals, to provide support and, and to let the family know that they are there to support the child. So everything looks to be improving on, on that front. We're very, very thankful. What this incident did is it reminded us that we have other areas of the school district that need some of our time and attention. And so shortly after the incident took place, the trees were removed with some mixed emotion, I must say. But that fostered a conversation that Mr. Karas has had with our insurance company, as well as some arborists that we have worked with and landscape architects. The short of it is, these agencies are going to, as best they can, evaluate and provide an analysis of the health of many of our trees on our campuses to make sure that they're safe or they're healthy and also to make a series of recommendations of whether they need to be trimmed, whether some need to be taken down, or what we can do to monitor the health and safety of some of those trees to make sure that, that students are safe at all times. So when those recommendations come to us, we'll make sure we, we share them with the board. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Thies for a quarterly staffing update.
Good evening, thank you. I want to start with this first slide here, which you can see in the middle column, gives you an idea of where we are today with our postings and who we've hired and what's still outstanding compared with September of this year on the left and compared with December of last year. So this time last year, you can see that we're, there's a normal trend that happens, I think, at the beginning of every school year where there's some attrition. There's some folks who decide that this isn't the right fit for them, and so we get a lot of resignations in the first couple of months. And so you can see that reflected in the increase in postings from September to December of this year. You can also see what I believe is more turnover this time last year, and that's why the number of people hired and the number of postings last year this time was so much higher, just the rate of turnover was higher. On the next slide, you can see our vacancies by bargaining unit. And here you can see, again, a comparison from December of last year to December of this year. And you can see a, a trend that we've been anticipating, which is a higher number of teacher vacancies at this time than we had last year. We've made some decent improvements on the AppSU front, hiring custodial workers, hall monitors, even some TAs, although you'll see on the next slide, that's still a shortage area. But I, I wanted to point out that we are definitely seeing in real time the effects of the teacher shortage as we are struggling, and you know, you heard it from, from Toast earlier, we are struggling to fill these teacher positions. And I'll talk more in a minute about some of the ideas that we have for that. On the next slide, these are our AppSU vacancies by title. And this is, again, just to kind of highlight the areas where, that are challenging. Hall monitors continue to be a challenge, teaching assistants continue to be a challenge, as well as custodial workers. What you can't see is the comparison from the last presentation. We have actually made progress. There's still a high number of vacancies, but we've hired a few hall monitors, we've hired some teaching assistants. So those bars have come down a little bit, but it is still an area where we struggle. On the next slide, you can see our instructional vacancies, also by title. And again, I'm highlighting, obviously, this is not all of our vacancies. This is a highlight of the greatest number of vacancies. And you can see ENL, math and special education continue to be the hardest areas to fill. We have more ENL vacancies today than we did in September, but we have fewer math vacancies today than we did in September. So we're doing our best to fill these positions. And on the last slide, the last time I gave you this update, you had asked for some percentages. This is what I was able to come up with for this meeting. And this basically shows you the percentage of budgeted FTEs versus, or how many of those are vacant. So we're hovering around just under 7% of our budgeted positions are currently vacant. And I hope that as we update our data and continue to clean up our data, we'll be able to start seeing some trends with these percentages. So I will work to continue to provide this on a quarterly basis. And then as far as our plans, so we, we've done a few things. We're trying to think outside the box. We get a lot of great suggestions from our colleagues and other administrators in the district. A lot of people came to us with the idea of reaching out to the ShopRite folks as they were being laid off. So we did that. We had a job fair for them last week. Price Shopper, I believe, is hiring a lot of those employees back, but we still managed to hire two people and we've got two people in the pipeline. Selfishly, one of the two people is going to be an HR employee, so we stole one of their HR people. We also got a certified teacher out of that job fair. That person is currently being hired as a sub, but will be interviewing for a teacher vacancy. And then there's a couple of other folks, like I said, in the pipeline. We are also working to, we're exploring our St. Rose network. There's a lot of St. Rose either alums or family and friends in the district. We will be working with those folks to get the word out about other positions that are available in the district. And we plan to host anyone from St. Rose who wants to apply for one of those jobs. We will host them at the high school on Tuesday evening from 5 to 7. And in addition to that, we are starting to plan our spring job fairs and career fairs. We have, we will be participating in Malloy University's Career Fair this spring. That's a university down in Nassau County. They have a very strong ENL program, so we're hoping to go down to that campus and recruit ENL teachers, among other teachers. And more recently, the superintendent's office has reached out to University of Massachusetts, University of Connecticut and Rutgers University. These are all very large universities within a three-hour drive to Albany. They have strong teacher prep programs and a very diverse student population, so we're hoping to build some partnerships with those colleges. We also have a, as I think I mentioned in the last update, we are building a partnership with Empire University, as well as Teach Brother Teach. So again, we're exploring all sorts of ways to recruit folks. We will participate in UAlbany's Career Fair this spring. If St. Rose has a career fair this spring, we will participate in that as well. And last but not least, we are planning the district-wide job fair this spring. We hosted one last year, it was very successful. We're going to move it up a couple of weeks this year to try to get to these folks before they've made any decisions. So it'll be in April this year instead of May, and it also won't conflict with college graduation that way. So that is our update in a nutshell.
Couple other updates in what has been a, a really busy number of, of weeks at the district. The State Education Department visited Albany International Center a few weeks ago. Associate Commissioner Alisa Alvarez met with members of the administration there and Mr. Gilio, and they toured a number of classrooms. And we were able to debrief with the associate commissioner and she was absolutely floored and, and inspired with the level of programming and support and really the vision that, that the school district has had for a school and programs of that nature that supports students, particularly those who are new to the country. She has committed resources to work with us to have AIC and, and the dual-language program and the newcomer program be considered modeled programs under her, under her team's watch. And we anticipate that we'll be hosting staff from other schools throughout New York State to see if, and, and school districts, to see if they could replicate similar programs across the state and, and perhaps in some of our neighboring states. So it was a, a great opportunity to learn- learn a little bit, but also be celebrated for doing the right thing and having successes that oftentimes don't show up on state report cards, or aren't in the newspaper. So, we're very proud of that recognition. Earlier this week, Roots, we celebrated Roots Academy's unveiling. If it weren't for wet snow, the tarp would have come off a little easier, but we had some unanticipated wet snow that morning. So, a number of months ago, we celebrated the name change and the process that the school community went through to create a new identity. And that process was highlighted at an assembly in front of all the children earlier this week. And it was a really incredible day for the students and certainly our school community, as we turn the page and create a new identity and new experiences for the students, both who are at Roots and who will be attending over the next number of years. And here's a picture of the unveiling. We got a little help from Mr. Kiefer on the ladder there. And while the adults were struggling with getting the tarp down, the students in unison, within seconds, were chanting, "Rip it off," right? Or no, "Take it down, pull it down, take it down," whatever they were saying, was very cute and made all of us a little nervous because we were not performing that well. You had one job, and we couldn't even, couldn't even get that done. Earlier today, I shared the podium with the mayor and a number of outstanding community leaders who, for a number of years, have led a campaign to make sure that all children in the city school district of Albany have new winter coats, and hats, and gloves. And that campaign wrapped up not too long ago, and today we officially unveiled that over 1,500 students in our school district will receive a brand-new winter coat, and hats and gloves totaling more than 3,000 were collected in terms of the donations that came in from businesses and individuals. So, a number of students at Eagle Point today went shopping, but the coats were distributed to all the elementary schools, and everyone that indicated, families that indicated they would like a jacket, were provided with one. So, that was an outstanding and fun opportunity today with a number of students. And lastly, a number of holiday music opportunities, if you've missed the ones that have taken place already. So, last Friday, the tree lighting ceremony right downtown near Academy Park and in front of City Hall, a number of high school vocal groups performed for a couple hundred guests that were there. I was there for a little while before having to go to another function. Tomorrow night at Spinner's, both jazz bands will be performing. If you haven't been there or heard the jazz bands, it's a really cool opportunity. I think they play every single chart in their set list. So, if you think they're going to play from 7:00 to 10:00, you'll probably be there until 11:30. We were invited to provide some entertainment to Chancellor, State Education Department Chancellor Lester Young's State Education Department Holiday Event. So, that will take place a little after lunchtime this Monday. Next Monday, we have some student vocal groups that are performing, as well as one of our jazz bands will perform in the big rotunda at the State Education Department. So, that is a great opportunity for students to perform and a nice recognition. We will have a bunch of caroling with the Police Athletic League and Santa at the Center for Disabilities next week on the 14th, and, which is next Thursday. And next Friday, a number of student groups, an orchestral group, and again, the jazz band, were asked to perform at the Bosse's Regional Technology Awareness Day. So, they're anticipating anywhere between 600 and 800 attendees. And the orchestral group will be playing as everyone signs in, and the jazz band will actually play as a kickoff to the keynote speech on Friday afternoon. So, plenty of opportunities to see our musical falcons perform both in schools and out in the community, and hope that you can make it. And updated schedules are on our website. And I just need to take a drink.
Superintendent, thank you very much. And we will take some questions. If my colleagues don't mind, I just wanted to start back at the top with the safety update. And Superintendent, just acknowledging to our community, our school community, and particularly with the high school, the incidents and the things that have been very disturbing, not only, as you say, in our world and globally, but that also are impacting our community. I just want to acknowledge the very, very hard work and stress that our staff are under, and also our students. This week, the board, I know that many of our, you did, and others' staff members heard specifically from teachers, and students, and TAs, and families about how they were feeling. And I admittedly found it very tough to reassure them. And I think that reassurance really has more to do with all that is happening in the world. I can tell you, we are doing everything that we believe we need to do in our schools to keep our youngsters safe, to keep them engaged in learning. But the world, things happening make me feel not so sure that everything that we do will prevent something. So, I don't make those promises when I'm talking to families, but what I do try to do them is that we have to come together. And I really appreciate that the high school, everyone there is working very, very hard under tremendous stress. But I was delighted to hear all that was articulated just now, and I'm glad the community gets to hear everything that we're doing, and a little bit more in the detail than they usually get to hear. So, very, very helpful. I also want to thank you for the steps that our school leaders at the high school, Ms. Comerford, in particular with her team, is putting into place. The meeting this morning with community members of the faith, various faith communities was very important, and I was very happy to be a part of it, as was Dr. Chatur and Mr. Elman Yawi. And we want to make sure that that does and is able to continue. And I think, as you said, not short-term, not just saying, "Okay, here's an easy fix," but rather, I think, if I'm correct, and my folks who were in those meetings can attest to this, but I think it was a sense of the village coming in to be a part of the fabric of our educational setting. It's always been those relationships, but this is different. This is really trying to come back and have a connection to all the institutions that maybe some of us grew up with, that we remember. You know, I can only tell you, there were no cell phones when I was growing up, but my mother knew everything that I did before she got home from her job. I don't understand how that happened. She was a factory worker. How is that possible? And, you know, or the neighbor, or my minister. All they had to do was look at me, and I'm just like, "I know, I'm sorry," you know. And it's changed a lot out there. So, I just want to commend everyone for staying, you know, focused and steadfast on the job of educating, teaching our students. And, you know, sadly, but we are doing it. We also have to love and nurture them, and be kind, and help them grow and develop, and sometimes in absence of, you know, that support that they get out in the community. But this step, I think, is an important one. And I really am so pleased that Ms. Comerford has done this, I think, many times, but really hearing her today talk about the meetings and discussions she's also having with students, because students are also just, they're exhausted, they're tired from this, but they are basically saying, "But we need to take back our school. And how can we do that?" And they're looking at those in some very, very positive ways. So, again, I think you'll hear much more, but I just wanted to express a bit of sadness, but also the support, the joy from the support that I think is there at the school, that's coming from the district, and certainly from my board colleagues. And we will do as much as we need to, to be there for our school community. So, just wanted to thank everyone for that. I will now start out with taking some questions from my colleague, and I won't say another word. I'm just kidding. But I want to take some questions from my colleague, and we'll start with the safety update. Let me start there. Mr. Elman Yawi, would you like to, oh, you, I want to get one in. Okay. No fighting over this now. Just, go ahead. Mr. Elman Yawi?
So, I don't have a question, but I was at the meeting this morning, and I will also lend my voice behind the hope that it was fostering, especially considering we had, we had something like 20 folks in the room, and the meeting was set, you know, the day prior. So, it was very important. People realize it's important. And, I mean, ultimately, there, like the superintendent said, there's a lot of terrible things happening globally. And I often find that you can kind of have a mirroring effect in localities based on what's happening nationally and globally. And we have to remember that we're all in this together. And I am going to, you know, save questions for, as questions arise from this group that's been put together. And I'm really hopeful. I do think that we can get progress made with help from the outside, and we're being a little bit, I think this is important, that the district is a little bit, puts itself a little bit at vulnerable, it's a little bit vulnerable, in saying, "Hey, we have these problems. We don't know how to solve them. There's no silver bullet. Let's hive mind this." So, I'm happy that that's happening, and I look forward to seeing its progress.
Member Creji?
So, I guess I do have comments. I do have questions. I don't really have answers at this stage. And rather than share my thoughts now, I know there's members of the public that have been waiting patiently for a long time. So, I want to be able to hear from them tonight, and then I will follow up later with specific comments and thoughts. So, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Chatur?
No questions, but I just want to add to what Hassan said. I mean, today's meeting was, it was important that it happened, and I'm glad that people showed up. Albany is a very diverse community, and being diverse is great, but being diverse also comes with challenges. People need to, different people need to hear things differently from different, in different ways, right? And so, trying to connect with different people outside the school building, and have people within the school building, make that connection, because this is different. You know, yes, Albany has had its problems. So does every other school. These few last couple of years have been progressively getting, feeling different. And, you know, the world itself is, a lot of things happening out there. And whether we are connected to it or not, somehow it trickles down to our houses. And, you know, so I have to say that I felt very positive that people were interested, A, to start fixing any problem, you acknowledge that there's a problem. That happened, right? And we are trying to find ways to brainstorm and come together, to bring that village together and try to solve this. So, I'm very optimistic as to what's going to happen in the future. And we've got to see how things play out. And I'm looking for everybody, every single one of us, to participate in that, because it's all our problems. It's not their problem, even if it's not happening in our building, or our community. It's all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Savage.
Thanks very much. Obviously, it's been a very difficult week. It's been a very strange week, with some wonderful celebrations in our district, and some very unsettling, is the superintendent's term. And one of the things that I appreciate about the meeting this morning, and the intention around having small group meetings with the students, is an increased level of communication. I really pride the district, or I'm proud of the district for the level of immediacy with which they are letting people know things, which is terrific. And that's a big change, I think, from four or five years ago, where, you know, now when there's a lockout, people know there's a lockout. Like, you sometimes get the text from the district before you get the text from your kid, which is kind of amazing. And so, I do really think we're doing a better job on that. But I think the two-way communication, the opportunity for people to ask questions, I think it's wonderful that that sounds like that's planned for the students. I think we need to do that for our community as well. And I'd like to see that start becoming more a part of our normal routine. But certainly, in a situation where we had a significant number of our high school students concerned enough that they chose not to come to school, that means we need to get more interactions with our families. So, as Ellen said, I'm going to hold for that for now and move on.
Thank you. I just want to, on this topic, I do want to just let Ms. Wilson and Ms. Mann get a word in, and then I want to make an adjustment, if that's possible. So, Ms.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. And my apologies. Under normal circumstances, this would be the district update, and public comment would come after, and unfortunately, it's going on extended. Just in response to the district update about the safety update, I just had two questions. I understand that it was a faith-based leader coalition, and I guess Anne suggested that we will include and continue to broaden that, to be more broader coalition of credible messengers. As well as, as far as dismissal, are we working, again, that coalition, because that is a large body of students walking and being dispersed at different times, and just how the movement is going? And then, lastly, of course, pathways for suggestions, especially regarding safety, to be sourced from students and their families. I understand that we're going to meet in small groups and communicate expectations, but just there being their overall ability and opportunities for people to say how they want things to be communicated to them, and how they feel the vision for safety should be. Thank you.
Yeah, I can answer some of those. So, regarding the staggered dismissal, students who take a bus were dismissed out of the rear of the building, and then students who walk were dismissed sort of every, every five minutes or so, starting shortly after 3:00. Attendance yesterday was troublesome. We had around 45% attendance rate, and today it was a little over 75%. So, that was very promising. A number of our district administrative leaders were at the high school this afternoon in that dismissal. I was one of them there. And, you know, the goal was to try to create connections and also keep people moving along. In terms of communication, I know I'm meeting with the principal and her team tomorrow morning. We'll talk. I wasn't part of the, this morning's meeting debrief, but I'm fairly certain that communication strategies with many different folks were part of that, and I'll be briefed on it tomorrow.
Good questions, Ms. Wilson. And I think we can update you as well later on, Hassan and myself and Dr. Chatur, as we debriefed. Board, Ms. Mann, I want to make sure you have an opportunity.
Well, I want to thank everyone for their patience, because I know it's been, we've gone on a little bit longer than we usually do. I want to thank all the families that reached out to us. I mean, I know that students were scared, and families were frightened. And so, I'm glad that we're moving along. Thank you, Anne, for the suggestion of expanding the group broadening, who participates. And I want to, I haven't shared this with him, but Councilman Johnson had a very powerful live on his Facebook page, social media. And he was really encouraging folks, and it's not the first time that I've heard this from him, but he has encouraged families, "If you have a moment, come down to the school. Come down along the corridor. Be present, because you don't know what your presence is going to mean to another student. And you don't have to have any, like right now, you don't have to have any rehearsed words. But if you can come, if you can spend five, 10 minutes in front of the school," and not everybody can, "but if you can, do." And thank you, thank you, Derek, for those words. And that, that's all.
Thank you. And again, I do want to say that the group's intent was certainly to expand. I think because there was some indication that the issues might have been between groups around religious group, faith groups, and so forth, it was decided to start there. But this is not the end point. This group will expand, and we, in fact, left, as we left, one of the last questions was about expanding that group. And we started, because students are already doing some of that work, that was definitely mentioned by Ms. Comerford, the involvement of our students, and being able to hear their voice, their perspective, their solutions. And certainly, we want to take that opportunity to have other groups will definitely happen. And we've already started some of those conversations with folks. And so, I do want to thank the team at the high school, and the facilitation was great by Mr. Tom Gilio, and leadership by Principal Comerford, Ms. McKenna. McKenna, um, Ms. Carrie Calzone, Dr. Carrie Calzone, um, Mr. Panetta, just a really good group of folks there. Um, and so let me, uh, I wanna stop. And we do have about six, um, comments and I would like to entertain a motion that we amend our, uh, meeting at this point, or agenda at this point, to go right into public comment. Uh, could I get a motion? Motion made by Ms. Wilson. They have, they have a second, please? Ms. Mann, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Uh, what I'd like to do first, um, I'm gonna call your name up, but I do have to give a few, a little bit of instructions and I will try to give them, keep them brief. Could I have, uh, Ms. May?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just one second now, thank you. Could I have, you, I mean, you can come up, I just, I just wanna read the names out. So no comments yet. Um, uh, let's see, Ms. Luciana Best, would you also come to the table? Um, Ms. Laura Joy? And, okay, I'll just, okay, Ms. Joy, and then I will call the, uh, other two, uh, up as we go. So please bear with me one second, I, I have to do this. Um, so, uh, we generally allow for about thirty minutes of, um, to hear from our district residents, parents, students and other members of the community. If we need to go further, we will make a motion to either extend or to come back after our meeting. Um, I want to also keep, uh, let you all know that, uh, and we do have some written comments that we will read, but we do accept comments, uh, in writing. Uh, we do also accept virtual live participation and voicemail. Uh, comments that are not in person must be made at least six hours prior to the meeting to give us time to, to review those and, and get them together. Your comments, written comments must be limited to four hundred words and voicemail comments to three minutes. All commenters must include their, their names and place of residence. We do not accept anonymous comments. Um, and the instructions for all of this are at albanyschools.org/boe. Um, I will ask you to keep in mind that information about individual students and specific district staff cannot be shared. Uh, this is a violation of privacy and we want to be sure that every student and every staff member, um, they deserve to know that their concerns about them will not be aired in public. Um, so I ask you to keep that in mind. And, I'm sorry. The other piece that I would like for you to keep in mind, um, is that, uh, when we're reading and also when you're referring, please do not, uh, refer to individual staff names. I think I just said that, but I would just wanna reiterate that. Um, and, uh, and so with that, let me start with, um, I said three minutes? Did, oh, did I say three minutes? And I, no, I did not say Dr. Chatur, our board secretary. Dr. Chatur will, um, uh, keep an eye on the time, three minutes per person, and, uh, he will let you know at one minute mark and also at ten seconds, I believe. So, um, my apologies, thank you. And with that, could I, Ms. May, would you go ahead and start? If you press the mic, is it, okay, you've got it.
I think it's on.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead. Thank you.
Um, good day, everyone. Uh, my name is Ms. May. I'm a teaching assistant at the Albany City School District, um, for about nine years. And yes, I love Albany High and those kids and especially the troubled kids. Um, I'm here today to discuss the safety issues at Albany High. We are not safe. I don't care what you guys say, we are not safe.
Agreed.
Um, to my knowledge, um, these incidents have been ongoing and it appears that no one has gotten to the meat and potatoes of the problem.
Agreed.
I'm not here to place the blame on anyone. Um, um, how many times are we gonna witness a beatdown or see a video of somebody being stabbed with blood on there? And then we're supposed to just be strong and go to work like nothing's happened? I think that what we're doing, we're allowing things to fall by the wayside and I do not think that is fair. Um, most of us can go home to our cozy houses, um, a lot of teachers and administration who don't live in a neighborhood, they get to go home and drink their hot cocoa with bourbon in it or whatever you wanna call it though. You know what I'm saying? Oh, they don't have to deal with what the, um, community deals with. And I think that is really unfortunate and is really sad. Um, Albany High is in need of diversity. Um, most of the African-American staff is hall monitors, TAs, cooks, maintenance though. You need more diversified teachers who understand the kids. I mean, I heard you guys talk about faith-based and all that. I'm quite, I hope some diversity was in that meeting though. I'm so tired of seeing new, um, non-African-American teachers hired when the ratio of students are mostly African-American who are mostly troubled. I'm tired of seeing white behavior specialists. I'm tired of seeing white social workers who don't even live in a neighborhood, who don't understand our kids other than what they read in the newspaper, who come in with the heavy bias on their shoulder and you could tell that they don't have an invested interest because if they don't speak to the staff, you know they don't speak to the students. Anyhow, um, it's time that we step up, you know what I'm saying? Our troubling youth is in trouble. I'm not here to say that hiring black administration, especially black males, would be the end for all, the great hope, but the kids who have troubling behaviors are mostly African-American. They need to seek individuals that look like them or who can relate to them. Another thing I wanna say before I end though, um, we also need liaisons that connect with the community, that look like me and look like the troubling kids. Yes, we have homeschool coordinators, but they are burnt out. And when you are burnt out, you don't work to your best. You understand what I'm saying? Cause I'm burnt out, but I come to school because I love my special ed kids. You feel what I'm saying though? Um, we need more liaisons for the community. And, um, I, I'm, I'm disappointed because the last time I was here, I heard the toast people say that they are training white peoples to teach black boys. That's an insult, Albany High. Come on, Superintendent, that's an insult. For training white women to treat black boys when you can't even hire black staffs to treat our boys? Who better than treat our community is us? I think that we need to make a change though and it's tired and I'm really tired.
Go ahead, Ms. Mann. Thank, thank you, Ms. May. And, uh, this, uh, this is recorded, so we do have those ideas that we will take down. Thank you very much for that. Um, and so, Ms. Best? Did I, yes, would you go ahead and you can move that right over?
Yeah. Oops, sorry, I'm short. Um, I'm also here to address the safety concerns regarding Albany High School. I do not feel like it's safe for my son. He has been out of school for the rest of this week. Um, I'm nervous to let him go. He plays sports. He's not one of those kids that's, you know, involved with these things. We had our first home game, this is his senior year, Tuesday. We were blocked out of that game as parents because of the violence that's going on at Albany High and which I do not believe that's fair. There have been other instances where things have taken place and they would implement, okay, only parents can come, or if you come, you have to be accompanied by an adult. You didn't even give us that option, you just shut us out. And some of us have seniors, this is their last year playing. Um, I'm hoping that for the remaining of the season, you know, if something happens, we are not blocked out to come to those games because it's just not fair. I personally do not feel like enough is being done about the violence. I don't think that you guys are telling everything, well, not even just you guys, whoever's reporting this stuff, I don't think they're telling everything that's going on in that high school. I think more should be done to help these kids. Um, I also think that you guys should be implementing other programs outside of school. When I grew up in Albany, I had big brothers and sisters, I could go to, uh, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. None of those things are available for these kids. So when they meet up and see each other, it's only in school because everything has been taken away. There's no rec centers, there's, you guys, you know, shut down most of the basketball courts, like everything is gone. So it's like, you know, I, I don't know if that would fix the issue, but I definitely think it would take some of the time that these kids have, you know, off of their hands. So I definitely think that you guys should do more to make sure these kids are safe because me personally do not believe that it's safe in Albany High, just from the things that I've known and I've seen with my own personal, you know, eyes. I just think that more should be done and should be looked into. I feel like it's being pushed to the side and you guys are saying, you know, oh, we're doing this, we did this meeting, we looked into this, we, you gotta get down to the meat and potatoes. It's that time because what I'm afraid of is that it's gonna go too far and somebody's gonna end up dead. And then it's gonna be this big ordeal. You, you know what I'm saying? And I would like for it to not go that far when we can try to do some things to nip it in the bud. I'm one of those active parents. If there's anything that, you know, I can do or if I can come help or hang outside the school for five minutes, I am more than willing to do that. If I could walk around always and talk to some of these kids, I am more than willing to do that. But we need to provide a safe environment for these kids. It's all about providing. And the staff too, I feel bad for them. You know, one of the videos I seen, one of the staff, he looked like he was scared to death. He shouldn't have to come to work as a hall monitor in fear for his life. So I feel like more should be done to make sure that these kids are safe and right now, nothing's being done.
Thank you, Ms. Best.
Thank you.
And Ms. Joy?
Am I good? Okay. Our children have learned how to keep themselves safe in a building with a threat of violence present on a daily basis. Many of them know to turn around if you see a large crowd or hear yelling, even if it means you have to walk all the way around the building to get a class that's three feet in front of you. Once they are in a classroom, their learning is constantly interrupted by students in the hallways yelling and making TikTok videos, arguments, fights, the fire alarm being pulled and lockdowns. But they still manage to be successful and accomplish amazing things. I think that our students have become desensitized in many ways, or at least have convinced themselves that they mind their business and keep their head down, they will be okay. That's clear that that is no longer the case. For the most part, even though it is sad, that has worked, but that has now changed. And our children are now navigating a fear that they should never have had to. They should not have to worry that a group of students could decide to jump then at any moment on their way to orchestra class and that there'll be no staff around to help them as they're getting stomped out outside of a academy hallway where the principals and the social workers and the guidance counselors and everybody works. Or that this time when a kid brings a knife in, that they actually do stab their victim or somebody innocent or somebody that's going to break up the fight. And it's nice that right now that it's all hands on deck and we have all these people walking around these buildings that have never walked in these buildings before. And we're showing support to these kids, but what's gonna happen Monday and Tuesday when these people have to get back to their apartments? And I gotta send my baby to school and there's nobody there to check on him. And right now you're walking around talking about some, where's your pass to go to class? How about you stop him and see, why are you scared today? Why do you not wanna walk in this building? Why did your mom keep you home for three days when you're an advanced student? No one is asking those questions. Yeah, you're having these meetings and that's great and I hope in the long term they make a difference. I need my baby safe today. I don't care about what's happening in the world, I care about my baby today at Albany High. I care about dropping him off in that building and being able to pick him up. I shouldn't have to leave work afraid that my son is hurt. Every time there's a lockdown, I'm scared. So can you imagine how my baby feels? And all we do is talk about, we're gonna put a couple of social workers in the library, stop in and talk to them. It's not helping. Y'all not helping us at all. We're not safe. The kids are not safe. And they know that. The social media threat you're investigating, our kids are investigating them too. And whether they're false or not, they think they're real. Address that. Convince them that you're looking into it. Convince them that it's fake. Cause they're scared and we're scared. And I work here and I'm scared and I'm angry at y'all because I have to show up and still do my job. Do y'all job.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. I think the three of you, and I'm going to call up the, the next, um, two people. Um, I wanna, hope I get this right. Michelle Broadhead and Holly Frazier. And Ms. Michelle, if you'd like to start? Uh, there's, it's on.
Okay. I think it's safe to say, as mentioned, my name is Michelle Broadhead. I piggyback a lot of things that were already stated. I think that the key point to this is that we have to be more proactive. I think that what's happening now is we become reactive when a situation happens. However, this situation, these situations aren't new. As mentioned by the doctor, Albany is one of the worst cities. So having said that, what are we doing to be proactive about this? What are we doing to take actions before we have to call the police and wait for the police? What's happening before then? We know through social media, like we said, that's different from before where we didn't have the means to track what's going on. Unfortunately, these videos are going around and they're coming into your hands. You're seeing the students that's actually doing these things clear. So what is going on? Why are they still allowed in the building? Why are they still allowed around the building? The building needs more security than, than they have. I went to pick up my children the other day, yesterday, when there were no, um, when they didn't wanna stay in school and I did not see any police. I walked right up to the school and I did not see any police. So I don't wanna hear something and not see it. So I wanna see what's being said. It's easy to tell us something, but it's actually better when we see it. So I think that that speaks volumes. We have to be more proactive. Again, you're gonna wait till something happens and you're not gonna have a chance to react. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Frazier?
Just a clarifying question. I know you said that we aren't supposed to mention staff names, but if we wanted to acknowledge them positively, is that allowed?
First, you didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if, if you don't mind and, and certainly, okay, I'm sorry. I prefer that you didn't, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Hello, ladies, gentlemen, and folks of the Board of Education. My name is Holly Frazier and I am the parent of a fourth grader at New Scotland Elementary School. As a bit of context, I spent almost eight years in teaching and am able to have a unique perspective in that regard. My daughter was, uh, diagnosed with autism and ADHD at age four. She has been a student at New Scotland since kindergarten and has had an IEP throughout her school career. Before I bring my concern to the board, I would like to sincerely thank and recognize each special education teacher and paraprofessional at New Scotland Elementary School. We have been truly lucky to have their support throughout my daughter's academic career. As everyone is well aware, there have been countless issues with first student, um, especially, it seems, the last two years. As district families, we have been assured and reassured that things are being dealt with. Uh, many of my child's bus drivers and aides have been very positive to work with. We've had several incidents on the bus that have been addressed, but our experience this Tu- Tuesday, um, has been by far the most unsettling. As I stated, my daughter has had an IEP for years now. Previously, the drop-off was hand-to-hand, but this year it changed to nearest, safest drop-off with an aide on the bus. On Tuesday evening, the bus was late, which at this point we have come to expect. My dad, who is retired and almost eighty-one, always waits outside for her. He waited and waited. As it got dark, he stepped inside and kept an eye on the window for her bus. Imagine his surprise to see my daughter alone, running up the street to the house after dark and no bus in sight. Apparently that day there was a substitute bus driver. He passed the house and rather than go back around the block to stop in front of the house or ask the aide to walk my daughter up to the house, the decision was made to drop off my autistic nine-year-old alone after dark, roughly the length of three houses and a two-car driveway away from my parents' home. They did not even wait around to see if she made it to the door. I would like to point out that it was also the same bus aide who's been on the same route for several months and absolutely knows where my daughter's dropped off. The ball was dropped. Again, I would like to remind the board that her IEP states that she is supposed to be dropped off at the nearest and safest spot. This was not near and especially considering the time of day and the part of Albany we live in, this was not safe. This is a violation of her IEP, a legally binding document. All of this happened around four forty, four forty-five. I was able to call the transportation department. Um, I was given an apology and I know that, uh, the vendor was contacted and the bus drivers were spoken to and I appreciate the individual who did that. Yesterday, I followed up with the Special Education Committee on the Vice from Friends. Um, I'd like to thank the people who answered the phone, who were very kind. Um, I had follow-up with one member to recap what happened and mention, and this person mentioned that someone specific would reach out today. I did not hear from this person today, so around lunch, I wrote her an email. To say I was unimpressed with the response I received is an understatement. I was told that hopefully this addresses my concern. I told this person in my reply that it did not and her tone in the email seemed to be indifferent to the gravity of the situation. I have not received a reply to my additional questions, which include, what are the repercussions for violating the IEP? However, this incident is just one of a larger problem with the transportation of special education services. So I guess my rhetorical question is, are we now deciding which piece is the IEP that will be followed? Are we going to minimize when a safety issue happens and IEP is violated?
Ms. Frazier, I, I do have to cut you off. My apologies. Do you have a written statement? Cause I will definitely have you send that to us for follow-up.
Okay.
Would you mind doing that?
Sure. I was just about done, so.[1681.23]
Okay. So, but I'm gonna stop you now and I will look forward to receiving it. And if you need an email address, please see our, or if it's there on paper, please leave it with our board clerk at the corner there. Thank you. I wanna thank all of you for your comments. They are very important to us, so we do appreciate you coming in in person, receiving them by voicemail or, you know, virtual. We do have three public comments that were submitted via email and I have board members who have agreed to read those. Ms. Creachey, are you ready to start?
The first comment I have came in from Kimberly Rochelle. "Good evening. I'm writing to you about my ongoing concerns surrounding student safety. As a parent of two secondary students, how do I convince them that they will be safe? Yes, the school has metal detectors, conducts bag checks, and requires all individuals visiting to be registered in the Raptor system, but the violence is still happening in the buildings and among student, amongst the students. I recognize that the schools and the district are facing many challenges and are trying to prevent the violent incidents from occurring, but more needs to be done to keep our students and staff safe. They deserve to feel safe and able to learn or teach without feeling constantly anxious and distracted by potential threats." State Education Law Section 3214 states that a student who is insubordinate or disorderly or violent or disruptive or whose conduct otherwise endangers the safety, morals, health, or welfare of others may be suspended for no more than five days. While I don't want to see our suspension rate increase unnecessarily, recent events at the high school illustrate that safety, as well as the health and welfare of others, have been compromised. If a student is continually violent and disruptive, at what point is he or she removed from the school setting so other students do not feel threatened or have their education diminished? What kind of data does the district have on suspensions and how often is this reviewed? How many of those suspended are repeat offenders? Is there a certain number of suspensions before a student will be transferred, as allowed in state education law, or expelled? I have tried to publicly praise the good things in Albany schools, and there are many, but I am afraid for my children and the staff in these schools because it seems like students who continually disrupt or threaten the safety of others are allowed to continue attending in person. Will it really take a school shooting for Albany to become more concerned with safety than looking good on paper or in the reporting of the data? I implore you to revisit your policies and allow students who are by definition a violent pupil to be removed permanently so all of our children can be afforded the opportunity to learn without fearing for their safety and the safety of others. Thank you." The second comment I'm going to read is from Sharice Vanderpool. "Good evening. I am a UPK teacher and my daughter attends Albany High School. My daughter's grades are great and I am educating my students to succeed. I am addressing the board as a concerned mother. This level of violence is getting out of control. All of the performing students, such as my daughter, state that the constant level of violence is making them feel unsafe. What plan is in place for this level of violence to end? Now we have students showing up with a handgun? I have a solution. Why don't students who cause and/or participate in these events, don't have, instead of an in-school suspension, an at-home one? Give them a computer, provide work, and have the homeschool coordinator pick up the student's work assignment. Students who receive wraparound services should be escorted to the services with a parent. Parents should take full responsibility for their children's behavior. Why should the school and students who come to learn every day encounter this kind of behavior? Better yet, do what the public school system in New York City has, and that's school safety conducted by the Police Department. Hall monitors are great for first and secondary school, but not enough for high school students."
Thank you, Ms. Creachey. Ms. Almanyawi, you have one as well.
My letter is from Amy Andrews. Look, the letter states, "To our school board members, I would like to express the frustration and fear that has become a daily occurrence for my Albany High School freshmen. Overall, and especially this week, I am highly concerned about the effects of these regular lockdowns and lockouts on our children's peace of mind and ability to learn. My child was afraid to go to school yesterday. While I understand that no place is safe from violence, and these are conversations we have had as a family, the ongoing atmosphere at Albany High School has become one of constant anxiety for my child and many others, I'm sure. I don't know what the answer is, but this feels like an unsustainable trajectory that our students are on. Yes, I choose Albany City Schools. I just want Albany City Schools to choose our kids."
Thank you. Thank you both. So that concludes our public comments, but again, I want to let you know that we find hearing from your, from you to be very valuable. And again, please feel free to reach out to us. The information as to how to do that is at albanyschools.org/boe. At this time, we move to the part of our meeting we call routine consent. Oh, I'm sorry. We, my apologies. In speaking with Superintendent, we were gonna come back to that?
After.
After, yes. So, sorry, I should've mentioned that before.
So I just wanted to make sure I understand, we're gonna do routine consent and then go back to district update? Is that what we're gonna do? Or are we gonna finish the district update and then go to routine consent? I don't really care. Just wanna...
Yeah. My recommendation was to move the rest of Superintendent's report toward the end of the meeting, just to get through routine consent, some of the other presentations.
So to the, to the end, please. Thank you all. And I suppose that shot, should've been made in the motion. I, I, you know, okay. Little occupied. Okay. So, routine consent. During this portion of our meeting, we approve routine matters for the district. These include items like contracts, field trips, personnel matters, and the like. Each board member reviews each item carefully, but we vote on them as a group with no discussion. This allows us time to use our meeting more efficiently. The, nonetheless, each member has the option to set aside any routine item in order to separate or to require a separate discussion and vote on that item. And with that, I'd like to ask if there are any set asides? Do we have any set asides? Dr. Shatur?
I'd like to set aside number 17, schoolhouse construction management contract.
Okay. Schoolhouse construction. Ms. Wilson, is that a hand?
No.
Okay. Any other set asides? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the routine consent agenda minus item 17, schoolhouse construction. Motion made by Ms. Wilson, seconded by...
Um, I'm sorry, I have one set aside as well. I'm sorry.
Alrighty, sir.
I was looking for it, but it's in two human resources.
Number two, human resources? Okay. 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 All right. Let me just make that motion again. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt routine consent minus item two, HR, and item 17, schoolhouse construction. Member Wilson made the motion. Mr. Almanyawi, seconds. All in favor? That carries. Thank you. Could we start with HR then? Mr. Almanyawi?
Sure. So, I...
Oh. My apologies. Motion, may I get a motion first to adopt item two, HR items? And Mr. Almanyawi, seconded, Ms. Wilson? Let's see. Any discussion? Okay, go ahead, sir.
So I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Jasmine Brown.
Excuse me, excuse me?
Oh, we're not gonna do that.
There's a plan.
Well, I just, as long as there's a plan, cause I wanted somebody to talk about it.
I'm sorry. I should, I thought you knew, cause we usually do it this way, differently. So, could you hold on that?
I can hold on that.
And may I mend the motion now to reflect only item 17?
That's...
Okay. We just have to go, okay.
Well, that's, yeah, that's my comment right there.
HR, okay. We're done with that. Okay. May I, okay. All in favor? That is unanimous? Thank you very much. Come back to that. Item 17, schoolhouse construction, may I have a motion to adopt that item? Dr. Shatur, seconded. Ms. Wilson? Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah. All right, just, the form is missing the purpose and outcomes of the program, and for the interest of the public, I would like Mr. Keres to explain why this contract is important.
Thank you. So this is the construction management oversight company that will be watching the energy performance contracts that we're starting, and I say, late January. So it's the new chiller, a couple new boilers, a new water tank or heating system for some of our locations. So they will be monitoring and overseeing the project alongside Deo Automation. Thanks.
Dr. Shatur, does that...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that it's in public comment.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure satisfied. Any further comment on this item? Okay.
We have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Creachey.
So, can, can Mr. Keres explain why this, why this company's coming in at the, at the stage? Is it one company works with us to build the thing and then another company works with us to manage the thing? Or is it a switch from one, one company to another for some reason? Cause I know we were working with Deo Automation before and the energy performance contracts is...
Yep. So this is the, the company that's gonna oversee the project, where Deo Automation is the one that's doing the project. They're watching the work. So it's the, making sure the chiller's put in place the right way, make sure everything's done and put online right. So it's the oversight.
So, so are these people like, like, it's like the difference between Turner and CSarge, kind of?
Yes.
But for HVAC?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Creachey. Any other questions to this one? Okay. All in favor of adopting item 17? That is unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Superintendent, I'd like to turn things over to you now.
Something very important happened among a lot of different discussions, but what the Board of Education did a few moments ago was appoint Jasmine Brown as our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Instruction. Before, before I turn it over to Jasmine, I'd, I'd like to share with everyone the, the process. So we had a number of, of very, very outstandingly talented leaders in our school district. About a half dozen of them indicated interest in learning more about the position, and those were conversations that I had with each and everyone who was interested. All of those individuals chose to be interviewed and we had two different groups interviewing. Our, our members of our administrative team, our cabinet interviewed six individuals, and then a committee comprising of union leaderships and Board of Education members, and also cabinet members interviewed candidates last month. And the consensus was to bring Jasmine on board. And so I know she's very excited. This has been a really tough couple of days, I know, for Jasmine. And whenever you leave a position and have the opportunity to do something different, it strikes up a lot of emotions and a lot of, a lot of history. And Jasmine has a very particular, long and, and credible history in our organization. And this was, this is one of the very first important decisions I have made as superintendent, and I'm, I'm really excited for Jasmine to join our team. So Jasmine, welcome and please share what you wish.
Thank you, Superintendent. So it has been a rough week emotionally for me, so I did jot down a couple of notes just so I could make it through this evening. So it is with great honor and excitement that I humbly accept the position as Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Instruction. While the decision to leave my current seat as the principal of Giffen has been a very difficult one, in this new role, I am encouraged to continue to support not only the staff, families, and students of the Giffen community within this new role, but to expand that to support all students within our school community. My journey in our district started as a student in a second grade classroom at Toast, who happened to present here tonight, then PS 24. It was there that my love of reading and writing flourished and I was encouraged and inspired to grow as a student and as an individual. Throughout my student career, I was not, I was supported by not only the people within my school buildings, but my family and the community as well. I've heard it a couple of times tonight that it takes a village. It does, and it did to get me here. I would like to just take a moment to thank a few people. My family, who sits behind me, my husband, my children, my mother, my sisters, my father, my closest friends, for always encouraging and supporting me, seeing things within myself that I do not always see, even when they have had to sacrifice the most for my commitment to this district that I've bought to my various roles through the years. To all of my colleagues, many of them who showed up tonight, the support has been unwavering, and I learn so much from each of you daily. I do look forward to continuing the instructional work already set in motion to further improve outcomes for all of our students. And finally, to my Giffen family, staff, parents, and students, I am eternally grateful for the time I have been able to lead, learn, and walk alongside them in the work at 274 South Pearl Street for the last 10 years of my career. To the board and the superintendent, I promise to always bring my best. I will work tirelessly to support and empower all of our educators within our system. I promise to collaborate with all stakeholders to ensure that our district continues to provide an exceptional educational experience for all of our students. Thank you all for all that you do to support our work each day. I am grateful for the trust you have placed in me within this new role and look forward to the opportunity to continue to make a meaningful impact on the lives of our Albany students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We will not be asking you questions at this time.
Tomorrow, though. We're gonna have a long list for you.
And I'm sure that some photo ops will happen just momentarily, but I'd like to also do one additional acknowledgement. I want to express our deep thanks and appreciation to Ms. Jetta Ray Gale, who has served as our clerk since January? January. And she will be leaving us to take care of some family matters, and we want to just recognize her contribution to the district for a number of years before she came to the board clerk position. And I know that you were at TCC E for, at Albany, and Albany High? Anna Brooken, excuse me? So you know, she has to remind me what that is. But I, I want to personally express our gratitude and thanks for your contributions, your work ethic, and your just ability to get the job done in all the positions you've held and in recently here with the board as our board clerk. So we present you tonight with flowers, and would you just mind if Mr. Almanyawi handed you those? So that they're not just sitting in front of you? And, yeah. And, and we will take a picture momentarily, but I wanted to thank you, Ms. Jetta. Is there anything that you'd like to, to say? Which, do, you need to come right up to the mic.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, and thank you. Now, Mr. Lesko, would you like to do a photo op at some, I know you're doing one with Ms. Brown?
I think so. I just didn't know if you were, are you doing Ms. Brown first? Is that your...
We'll figure it out.
Okay, he'll figure it out.[1623.26] Okay, he'll figure it out. Okay. Hello, everyone. We did take an unplanned break, and thank you for your patience out there in the audience and also those watching virtually. Okay. Next, I believe, up is our policy. And is this, this is action, I believe? Okay. Dr. Shatur?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Today, we shall have two policies, a 50-50 athletic placement process and inter-scholastic athletics code of conduct for action items, and then the Team Operations Manual, which is Tom's actions 18.2, the Policy 2230, which is associated with that, and Tom 30, which is budget development process, is action items as well. These were discussed the last board meeting. Any further discussion? If none, then we have a motion to adopt all of them together. Mr. Almenyavi, Ms. Crayci, all in favor? That's your answer, Ms. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shatur. Anything additional there, Ms. Savage? Okay. And our Teams Manual is coming along, yes?
Yep. We have one more to do, which we hope to get to at the beginning of the new year.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up is our discussion, a capital project update. And I think that's going to be... Mr. Peckham, are you joining us at the table? Is that... Oh, wait, where is Mr. Karas? Okay. He just stepped out. Okay, I believe, yes, I see Turner online. I did see the emails that were coming up. And is that Mr. Karas coming through? Okay, we're gonna... Mr. Peckham, were you going to kick this off anyway? Are you prepared to launch in?
I can launch in, no big deal.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So tonight, we're going to have Turner Construction provide an update on the high school, and I guess the overall district-wide capital construction projects and status of those. I think that John Hunt's going to lead the... Who's leading the high school, guys?
I'm going to take the lead on the high school. Good evening, everyone. So quick overview of the overall schedule for the high school. Phase one was the classroom addition. Phase two was the art and music classroom addition. Phase three was the media center, the new main entry, partial academic building, gymnasium, and the auditorium. And phase four, which we're currently on now, is the new, or the renovated academic So before we get too far into phase four, we are still wrapping up, closing out phase three. We're about 98% complete with all punch lists, so we're really focusing on closeout of our remaining contractors and punchless items. We do have a couple, a few change orders lingering from phase three. There's some upper parking lot camera conduit work, work to install conduits for cabling that goes to some new cameras up in the upper parking lot. Temporary kitchen, a fire protection change. We're working on getting a final change order in for some work that was done during the temporary kitchen build-out by the fire protection contractor. We have some bond adjustment change orders that we're expecting from all of our contractors. So far, we've only received the GC's portion, so this ROM estimate is for the remaining contractors. And then the last item here is the added dimming capability to the gymnasium lights. This is a change order to literally just add the ability to dim the gymnasium lights for school functions like dances and, you know, I guess whatever else you'd want to dim the gymnasium lights for. So that's what this final change order would be for. Phase three, like I said, it's wrapping up. We're almost done. So we're going to end the project with approximately $54,000 in contingency. So we were down to the last 2% of the original contingency balance. And now on to phase four. So a couple key schedule components that we've got on here is the loft building structural modifications, all the modifications that are needed structurally to support the new building and mechanical equipment and stairwells and so on and so forth. We're estimating that those are going to be complete March 5th of 2024. The next item on here is the connector corridor addition steel. This is the new, the new, new connecting corridor that's going to go between the first phase building and the new phase four work that's under construction right now. And so this is the steel for that, which is estimated to be done in March, mid-March. The next item is setting the air handling units, 19, 20, and 23, which are the three air handling units that are needed for turnover of the level-one kitchen and cafeteria space, which is the highlight, you might say, of phase four, and then the turnover of the cafe and kitchen facilities, which is in August of 2024. So to the fun part, we'll look at the photos here. So on the outside of the building, you can see we've got the exterior framing going up, exterior sheathing, and the general contractor is installing poly over the future window openings so that they can quickly enclose the building and start getting temporary heat running inside. And in that photo on the right, you can see the Mason had their setup on the outside. They're currently working on the interior CMU masonry walls for the elevator, or for the stairwell shaft. So inside the building, there's a lot of trenches, a lot of underground utilities being run right now, especially for the plumber. This is in the new kitchen area. These photos on the top are where the new kitchen is going to sit. The site contractor has dug all the trenches. The plumbing contractor has actually finished installing all of their underground plumbing in there at the point where they're backfilling and getting ready to place the new slab. And that's one of the sheer walls that you can see in the top two photos taken from two different sides of it that was installed earlier this year. And then on the bottom photo, you can see a bit of the roughing from the electrical contractor, some of his conduit and pull boxes running through the first floor. So level two and three, the interior framing is progressing. The electrical contractor has started their in-wall roughing on level three. Plumbing contractor has started setting carriers and their in-wall plumbing roughing on level three. And then HVAC roughing has started on both floors. Couple more photos of the interior. You can see a lot of metal studs, more MEPs in the ceiling. Contractors are just progressing through the building. Here's that stairwell on the inside that I was talking about. So they are finishing up. So they actually completed level one. These photos are of level one. They've completed level one. They've moved on to level two. So a big part of this was coordination with the MEP contractors so they can set sleeves and run their MEPs through the wall, set any electrical boxes for switches or panels that they might need. And all that coordination is underway to get this stairwell up and running. A couple more photos of the outside. So this is the connector corridor addition. These are the foundations being prepared right now. So lots of concrete for these big grade beams that you see running perpendicular, lots of very thick rebar. It's very time-consuming. They've had a lot of hours into it, but they're almost, they're almost up to grade, which will be a big, a big step. Quick snapshot of our EEO and MWBE reporting. EEO from the phase-four contractors is averaging about 2% for October, and MWBE participation was 1%. These, again, these are based on October numbers, so we'll continue to update these as the, as the project progresses. And then snapshot of some of the big-ticket change orders for phase four. We're holding a ROM of $500 for some temporary, some modifications to the temporary offices in Area Four. The plumber is the only one who, whose change order we're still waiting for, so that's the only, that's the only change order that we're showing open right here. The PA speaker modifications to the cafeteria and temporary offices. We have a proposal from the EC for about $1,600, and they're, they're working on a revision to that that we should see soon. Glass pipe removal. We're holding a ROM for the GC for approximately $31,000 for a glass pipe discovered that contained contaminants that could not be handled through regular demo. So that was removed by a Clean Harbors, you're a specialty abatement process, and brought to a safe removal site. So that's what that GC ROM is for. There was some additional ACM caulk abatement at window seals and window header locations around the building. So this was a big, a big scope of work. The current GC proposal and approximate final number is 135,000. So this was a big unforeseen that was discovered as the exterior, as the exterior of the building was pulled apart, and the GC was able to expose this caulk, and it was tested, and it was discovered hot. So that had to be abated through, through an asbestos abatement contractor. The next item is the credit for the base bid parent drop-off loop. We have two numbers, one from the site contractor and one from the electrical contractor. Site contractor's credit value right now is 128,382, and the electrical contractor's credit value right now is 9,296. And that, again, that is for deleting the base bid parent drop-off loop in front of the high school. Next item is the supplemental steel modifications. There's not too much to say about this one. Some added frames, some deleted frames, some relocated steel frames throughout the building to accommodate MEP install and unforeseen conditions throughout the building. This next item is the East Athletic Field drainage modifications. This is a ROM to install drainage at the field, the east field, which was just seeded recently by the site contractor. That was the field that was under construction over the summer. So this, this change order, this PCO, would help to alleviate some of the water buildup on that field. placeholder, this next one is a placeholder to refurbish the existing curtain wall at Towers One and Two. So during the project, early on in the project, I should say, you know, it was brought to our attention that there's some existing gaskets and just damage to the, to the, to the existing windows and curtain wall at Towers One and Two. So we put this placeholder in there for the GC to, towards the end of the project, go in there and refurbish those, those windows if the district chooses to go that route. And then the last item is a placeholder to thoroughly clean the Rubber Gym floor after that is no longer a kitchen, a cafeteria space. So this is just a budget number, just a placeholder to hold some money for cleaning the Rubber Gym floor before it gets turned back over to the district at the end of, at the end of its kitchen use. And to summarize all that, here's a pie chart, and we're holding about $1,949,000 in contingency, which is about 81% of what we started with. And that, that puts us in pretty good shape because that's about 5% of the remaining work to put in place volume, which, which is what we like to see at this stage. Any questions on the high school?
Folks, any questions on the high school? Do you want to take them now? I'm seeing none for the high school. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Are we going to share the middle school?
Yes, middle school slides. Okay, thank you.
So the high school?
Okay, I'm sorry. Middle school?
It was on the presentation that Nick was going off of.
Oh, it's part of the same presentation with the high school? Yes. Okay, you got it.
All right. This will be fairly quick because we are getting towards the end of this project. Just working through some of the final punch list items. I believe we have less than, oh, less than 10 now. Finishing up some of the site work, completing the finishing touches regarding some security devices for the gym curtains, working through a change order to provide a bathroom exhaust for a bathroom on the first floor. And then working through a couple other items with the mechanical contractor, the exhaust fan being one, and the reviewing the pump and BFD that operates the pump that's been causing a breaker to trip in the boiler room. Looking at the final change orders of the project, the toilet room exhaust, that's still in the proposal phase. We still have left to modify some railings throughout the classroom addition wing at a ramp. Holding a placeholder for the work involved with reviewing the pump and the breaker. There is a door to a classroom that requires a little bit more modification for a card access. And then the cafeteria, the RTU had to be repiped due to some issues with the cooling over this summer, wasn't working at maximum efficiency. So there were some modifications made. Just some, the lawn, I assure you, looks a lot better than that, but these were just sort of some of the end-of-project photos here. And I, unfortunately, I don't have the ability to present, but I have some other photos that I'd like to share if time allows to sort of turn the page as we end NAMS and this Group Three projects after this. So I'll do it after the Group Three update. As far as the potential change orders, at the end of the project, we have a remaining contingency of around $82,000. 6% of the remaining. And the pie chart here kind of explains the different areas that accounted for that. Any questions on North Albany?
Colleagues, any questions on NAMS? You may make a comment, Ms. Wilson.
I don't have a question. I know we're not quite finished, but I do want to commend that the work is exquisite. It's quite beautiful. Even in the photos, you can kind of tell that we have the benefit of a brand-new facility in the way it's been reimagined. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any additional? Okay, I'm seeing none. No more questions there for NAMS. Thank you all for that.
Yeah, after Bill does the update for this, I'll just, I have sharing capability now so I can share some of the accomplishments over the last two years.
Terrific.
Excellent. Moving on to the district-wide, this is going to be very short because we're in the final stages. As far as the work complete punch list, there are five items that are being addressed. There is some hardware issues that are being worked on between Arbor Hill and Giffen. Those will be resolved here shortly. And Academy Park is addressing the staining of the retaining wall. That's being addressed here over the next few weeks as well. Project successes, the stone work at New Scotland Elementary, the new tennis court resurfacing over at Myers. One of the major accomplishments of many in Arbor Hill was the ductwork within the main atrium and all the painting of that, and the new electrical service that went into Arbor Hill. Right now, we're a number of changes that are with the client that are close out related on changes. Those are in the process of being executed. And then any potential change orders, there's probably going to be three, maybe four, that are related to bond adjustments. When you get to the end of the project, wherever the change orders are, that's where the bond adjustment occurs. It could be an add or credit. Currently, right now, with starting contingency was 960,000. The remaining contingency currently is 123,435, and the percent remaining is 12.8%.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions regarding the five-year plan? Ms. Creachey?
Sure. I have a capital project question. I'm not 100% sure this is the, it's part of the five-year, I'm not sure it's part of the five-year plan, but since it's a capital project, I figured I would ask. I wanted to know about the status of the playground design and rebuilding at Edmund J. O'Neill for the Albany International Dual Language Students, because I know they've been waiting a while. I wasn't sure if that plan is still with the archetypes. And I guess it may be not part of the five-year plan because the funds were approved subsequent to the five-year plan. Is that correct?
Yes. And I think Mr. Karas will answer, but we have been updating the school community there pretty regularly. But Mr. Karas, do you want to?
So the lot across the street next to the vacant building, we're not, that playground was, it went through SED and was approved. The problem is that the building has fallen apart next to it that's vacant. So at this point, we're not building anything over there. In the meantime, we put the new fencing around the back of the school building with the lot as well that we cleared over the last, I would say, six to eight weeks. Right now, Mr. Peckham is helping with, and Don, helping a design for the back area where that lot was. I think there was two meetings with the Playground Committee at EON or IAC. There's going to be a couple more, and we're hoping that we will have a design that will move forward to the board and then to the state ed so that we can build the one in the back first while we wait for what's going on in front.
Thank you. That's really, that's really helpful. And I know nobody expected that building to be condemned and falling down, and obviously safety comes first. So it's helpful, it's helpful to be able to understand what's going on, so I appreciate the update.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Elmanyawi and then Ms. Savage.
So Member Creachey just reminded me to ask you, essentially, because I also have a question about the small ash playground, and I think it was a part of the five-year plan. Do we have an update, like the really small one that's like on the side of the building? I think it's like pre-K, kindergarten.
It's the IP or student special ed piece on the side.
Yeah.
So we got tripped up, the vendor. There's a few issues going on with that playground there. So with the vendor, so we have another person that's going to be coming to install the playground for us. At this point, it's a little bit late in the year, so it's going to be probably springtime. We are first on the list, as far as I know, to be the install for that area, but it's the one that's down inside the area, so they have to actually take and put their equipment down inside of it. So it's a little bit more effort as well.
Mr. Karas, if I remember correctly, this is where the, I mean, you all basically had to come and unpack the truck, if I recall, Mr. Opperman. Yeah. So some vendor issues there. And so that's created a delay.
So I just remember it being one of the playgrounds that we were also going to work on.
But not part of the five-year plan.
It was not a part of the five-year, okay.
Okay. Ms. Savage, go ahead, please.
I did want to just follow up, make sure I understood what you said, what you said in answering Ms. Creachey. And maybe we just need a quick, like, one-page summary of, like, playground projects that are outside the five-year plan because these things keep coming up because they're like, they don't fit in the right category. So, but Mike, you said something like, we're going to do the one in the back first while we wait for what's going to happen in the front. And I was a little confused by what that meant. I didn't understand that.
So I know the city compliance officer has reached out to the owner of the property a few times. There's architectural things that need to be done to that vacant building that also had a fire in it, I'm going to say in the springtime, late spring. So there's various things that have happened, but...
So the hope is that that building will be brought up to code and we might still be able to put a playground in that spot? Or we're yielding and giving up on that spot indefinitely? And that's what I'm trying to understand.
No, I don't think we're giving up on the spot. We're rather than just waiting.
We're just going to do the back one first and then the front one first? Okay, I understand. And then is there a rough estimate about when we might see children on playground? This is like my same question with child safety zones, like, all these steps, wonderful, when do I get kids on buses? So when do we get kids on the playground?
On the back playground?
On the back playground.
So if we put and present an option for the board to approve to put into state ed, I'm going to say January, February, we're hoping that we break ground in June, July? Does that make sense? I'm looking towards rich. And then it'll be September by the time students are...
I think that that's a reasonable schedule. We'll try to accelerate it if possible.
I didn't realize we had to go through a full state ed review and that was so lengthy for a purchase of playground equipment that's just installed.
And that's one thing, we may not, based on the final design, we may not need to go to state ed if it's just installing that playground equipment.
We would not have to go to state ed if we're only building the playground, but what are we going to state ed for? Is it because of the, is there other construction that needs to be done?
I don't think so. I just want to double-check with state ed that they don't need to review it, but typical playgrounds, because we're not doing any other site work as far as the playground work, that's already been done. Unlike the playground across the street where we were new site, not directly attached to the school, and we were doing clearing and fencing and everything as part of the playground project. The district has already done that work on the other site, so.
Ms. Wilson, please, go ahead.
Can we also have an assessment, or do we have an assessment of all the vacant properties that impact us in this way? Similarly, that we were doing an assessment of all the arbor or tree situations that we have around the district, just because I know sometimes the vacant buildings can be fire hazards also.
Mr. Karas?
I just want to make sure I understood in your question you're asking about, do we have an assessment of vacant properties that are adjacent to properties we own?
Or nearby in such a way that is precarious, just like this one is? I know that they have like an audit of all the vacant buildings.
Yeah, there's a list, yeah.
Yeah, so I would assume we would just overlay.
It might be an interesting question, since I know Mr. Lesko is in touch with that office anyway for child safety sound reasons, that it might be something that could be at least a list of the ones that are near our properties. I don't know.
And, okay. Mr. Karas, were you adding anything there or just making notes? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Additional questions? Ms. Savage, please?
Yeah, I just had one question. That was really just a follow-up from Ellen's question. But my question was, can we anticipate sometime soon-ish that we will get a presentation on the options the board has for money that's remaining at the end of these projects? Because it does look like, through careful husbandry of resources, that there may be some contingency that doesn't get expended for the five-year plan. And as part of that, I know we had a long list when we approved the five-year plan that we shared with the voters. And I'd love to see that long list with a check mark next to each one, because I remember there were a couple things we talked about that I feel like never got evolved, which the thing that comes to mind is the question about lunchrooms and soundproofing and whether that was necessary or useful. And we did put some money in for that, and I think it got, you know, repurposed, as it often does, fine, but we have money left, so I'd love to know whether that was considered and, you know, if there's anything else on that list that got deprioritized as we went through the five-year plan.
Or whether something is still a concern.
Absolutely. I just know we had a long list and we can't always do every single thing that we wanted to do. So I just want to know what's still on the list that didn't get done.
So, Mr. Karas, yes, go ahead.
So I will get, I don't have that list, so I'll get it for you, and we'll go through and check mark what was completed. As far as the contingency money that's left over, usually you can borrow less from the bond, because right now we've been using bands. And we are, it's a hybrid where we have part of it paid out of the capital project, so either we go put it back in the capital project, or we try to see something on the list, I mean, and try to get something done. I mean, with all the contractors that have finished up, it's a little bit harder. But those are three different options of what you can do.
And with your last comment there, it almost, I mean, again, if we can do something, that'd be great, but it sounds like by the time we could do something, we're already rolling into putting together the next five-year plan. Okay, so, okay. All right. Thank you. I lost my place. Any other questions here for, okay.
I can just share my screen and just go through a couple of photos of the, just to, I believe this is going to be one of the, the last time we'll be reporting for North Albany or Group Three, just because of where we are in construction. So try and share this. Can everybody see this?
Yeah. Thank you, John, yes.
Yep. So auditorium at North Albany. The shots here. The other direction. Some lighting. Shot of the new survey. The new kitchen. The cafeteria. I don't know if you all saw, but the students did a really nice mural. Just a typical finished science classroom. Some shots of the corridor. Exterior, the quality on some of these. Moving to some of the Group Three highlights, the stairs at Academy Park. Bathrooms. More bathrooms, lots of bathrooms for Group Three. The turf at Delaware in the playground. Refinishing the stage at Hackett. Some contractors helped set up the basketball hoops. The painting of the exterior at Montessori. Signs throughout, this just captures three of them, but I know we did a few more. Playground at Arbor Hill, or Toast. And then some stair work. So this was just, just capturing some of the project milestones and achievements over the course of the last few years. I know I was just touching on a few, but...
Thank you. Thank you so much, John and team. Yes.
Yep.
That's great. Mr. Opperman?
Good evening. I appreciate John sharing those pictures. Sometimes we focus on all of the things that are left to do, but it's also nice to recognize the accomplishment of the day. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our professional service partners, CSArch, Tetra Tech Architects and Engineers, and of course Turner Construction for the work at our North Albany Middle School and the current five-year plan. As John pointed out, we will likely not be talking about those again at our next quarterly update. We have very few items left. And while it's bittersweet, I think it's fair to say we are looking forward to the future and setting our sights on the next set of projects for the five-year plan that's coming. Thank you.
Will said, thank you all. Yeah. Mr. Peckham and everyone.
Okay, so I... Okay, so I think the next agenda item is to review and hopefully get board consensus on moving forward on a couple of items at Albany High School, Phase Four, that we've talked about previously and had some follow-up information for the board. And these are the, the parking lot that we may be able to use for student drop-off and pickup, and also the storage building for grounds equipment. So, on the screen right now is just the overall site plan of the conditions. The lower part in front of the building was where we were going to build the drop-off loop, that we have, you've heard about the proposed deducts for taking that out. The existing Upper Washington Avenue lot, the main, the West Main Lot, and then the area where the trailer complex is right now, that will become a parking lot. So just moving on to some changes that have already occurred. We made some modifications in the West Main Lot, and we'll look at the detail there to gain parking there. And then looking at using the upper lot as parent drop-off, you'll see that location for a remote storage building for grounds equipment, and then convert the trailer complex area into a parking lot for about 39 spaces, which would happen in the summer of '25, once the contractors are done using that area. So looking at a little bit of detail of the exterior storage building, we've really looked at three different options. The latest is showing it in that kind of notch in the tennis court area. It'll be out of the way, not impact any of the athletic fields, and be a reasonably effective location to, to place that. They'll also be, we'll use the edge of the tennis court pavement that's already there outside the fence for access to it and create a curb cut along the driveway to get into that area. So there really, we looked at three different options for how we're going to build this building. The first option, which was what was bid with the contracts, was to do metal exterior, it'd be a wood-framed building with a metal siding exterior similar to the material that's on the high school, the metal on the high school, and this would have a metal roof. Another option that we looked at, this is the building right now, right out behind Harry Gibbons here, that the, that the Buildings and Grounds Department uses now. It's a timber-framed structure with a, with an insulated metal panel exterior. This was an option we're putting forth because of some of the comments and feedback from the board previously about the option of more of a prefabricated shed and the long-term durability question of that. This is, as I said, it has the metal panels on it, so that'd be a little more durable. We tried at the high school not to have piles of stuff outside of it, but that's, that would be kind of the, the image of what we'd be doing, actually on a smaller scale. This is quite a bit larger than what we're talking about. And then the third option that we talked about before was just to do a prefabricated wooden oversized shed and put it on a concrete slab. So really, these were kind of the design parameters for the, for the Option Two, really, that we're looking at, which would be a 14-by-28 shed, two garage doors, one man door, put it on a six-inch slab. We'd get some power out there so we can run both security cameras, lights, and chargers for any battery-operated equipment, and that would give us security out there as well. And then we're also going to modify the first-floor design of Tower Two in the building for the smaller walk-behind snow blowers and things that they may need right up near the building more often than the, than the larger tractors and gators that would be in the other storage building. So looking at the overall cost of these three different options. Then Option One, which was what we bid with the rest of the contracts, had a cost of $272,000, feeling that that was a, a cost, an investment larger than needed to be made for, for providing this function. Option Two, which is the timber frame and the insulated metal panels for the exterior, that's estimated at a ROM of $190,000. And then Option Three, which would be the prefabricated wood structure with a shingle roof, was estimated as a ROM of $146,000. Our recommendation for consideration by the board is to proceed with Option Two because of the, of the better, better quality, probably more long-term benefits to the district and reduce maintenance on that facility. I don't know if you want to talk about this one now, or talk about the parking lot also, and then come back to both of them? Okay?
Yes, I'm sorry, we can do this one, yes. Colleagues, any comments, questions? Any thoughts?
Good question. I mean, these shingle roofing, how often would they have to be replaced?
On a building like this, probably 30 years.
Ms. Savage?
My questions are mostly about the location, and I'm, I really, I yield to those with much more expertise than I about whether which one of these is the most cost-effective, but the question is, if it's located on the edge of the tennis courts, questions about utility, is that like a long schlep for where the equipment actually needs to be used? Is that a problem for the folks who are using? Is it going to make it more difficult for that equipment to be used? And then secondarily, but also related to the location, if we're running on the tennis courts, does that, which is the same, same surface that the tennis courts are on, does that have any impact on our warranty for, or whatever, for the longevity of the tennis courts? It just seems like they're not designed for running heavy equipment on over a long period of time.
I'd like to address the first one and allow Rich to address the second. We have talked to our facilities personnel about different locations that we've considered, and they're supportive of this option. We, we have been trying to find a balance between proximity to the parking lot and the activity for ready access to the equipment. And in fact, that's why we're using a two-pronged approach, providing Tower Two access to walk-behind snow blowers and sweepers and shovels and some salt, so it's immediately available. And then for the larger equipment-only, subcompact tractors and gators, that's what we're looking for, this garage-to-house. And this is all driven by a compliance issue. You know, the internal combustion engines that utilize fuel and so forth, so we're really trying to...
As far as driving on that apron of the tennis courts, the pavement underneath that, because really the tennis courts are a parking lot with a coating on it, and the construction of that is two and a half inches of asphalt base and then an inch and a half of asphalt top, which would be the exact same construction that we would use to build a parking lot. So the asphalt's essentially the same going in there.
I hear you. Is there a warranty on those tennis courts? I just know that tennis courts have a higher degree of expectation in terms of what the quality of the surface is going to be than a road. Like, a road with a crack in it has a crack in it, but a tennis court with a crack in it has a very, very serious problem. So I'm just trying to understand if we're jeopardizing that.
There's no, there's no extended warranty past the one-year contractor warranty on the tennis courts.
Okay.
But just to be clear, so the concern is whether or not all that heavy equipment is going to impact the tennis court?
Yeah, because it sounds like it's the same surface. It's like a big, big, flat surface, and there's a fence at the edge of it, and on this side of the fence is a tennis court, and on this side of the fence is the left, the like residual surface, and we're going to be driving really heavy equipment on that surface. And that just seems like an unusual thing to do, and it makes me feel like, it's not a choice that I would feel like qualified to, to know that that was really going to be a good choice and we shouldn't maybe lay a different surface somehow.
I would think that the equipment that's being driven, and I was talking about the gators, they're actually lighter than a car, and, and even the tractor is a small subcontract, compact tractor, so it's, it's no heavier than a pickup truck probably, so.
Okay. Okay. Additional questions on, on this? Okay. Well, I was just getting ready to vote, hold on one second. Ms. Savage? So if we are ready to, to vote here, why don't we get a motion? I'm going to go with the recommendation first. Can we get a motion to accept Option Two for the storage building? And, Ellen, is that a motion or a question?
Before, before we went to a vote, I wanted to ask a follow-up from Ms. Savage's question, which is, can we, can we ask the tennis court surface vendor, maybe, about the question? Whether it voids a warranty or whether they, whether they advise against doing it before we vote on this as a final plan?
So, for another reason, existing cracks that have been found in the tennis courts, we know that the warranty that we had has elapsed. We are looking at, though, with counsel, trying to find a, a suitable resolution. So there is no warranty left on those courts. That warranty has expired.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just before we vote, I believe it's Slide Three that shows the proposed location. Do we, and I know we consulted folks and asked where they felt comfortable or where best made sense, but do we have an alternate, just an alternative option that we looked into if we look at that schematic or anything else where it, like, naturally, like, a second-place location, just out of curiosity?
We have looked at a lot of locations. In fact, if you go back to the overall site plan, we never took it off of, if you go back one slide, or a couple of slides.
Do you remember this? This was around the Chestnut Interest?
Yeah, right, yep. We looked at, well, back up, back up one more. Nope, one more than that. Nope, okay. I guess it was taken off of here. Maybe it's one more back. We, we, we looked at an area along the driveway coming in, right at the corner of the parking lot, and, and because of the water that comes off that hill and the ability to manage the water coming off that hill from the, basically from the Reserve Center parking lots and that whole thing, it was going to get very expensive to construct in that location, and that water would create some long-term caught, or maintenance concerns.
And in fact, that we were going to have to build a retaining wall, is that right?
Right, yeah. We're going to have to build a retaining wall behind it and everything, so. That's, that's why that was not looked at. We had the location where we initially planned, which is at the corner, at the, at the field area, which was felt that in case things do get left outside of it, like the picture of the building here, we didn't want that image there. Similar, we even talked about, what if it goes where the Falcon Farm part is, behind the pool? But that similarly, we didn't necessarily want that structure in your very public area of people coming to, to games and use of the, use of the field there. So, you don't have a lot of land here that's not already used for something, so we had a, had a, looked at a number of options. We had a meeting in Turner's trailer saying, "Does anybody have any ideas?" And I think it was one of the guys from Turner that suggested this corner out there, so.
Yep, and we did review those in committee, if you recall. Mr. Elmanyawi?
So, I'm prepared to vote on this. I do have two questions regardless. So, is there going to be electricity that comes out to this shed? So we'll have the ability to have, like, a camera? Okay, good. And then, I guess the other thought was that, why is it necessary to go down this skirt? Can't we just go on the outside of the skirt? Can we just push?
Part of the issue is then those used soccer fields, what we call the used soccer fields, goes up about three feet in elevation.
Ah, yeah.
So we'd be cutting into the field to make that work if you wanted to put a driveway next to the tennis court area.
But we would really just be using this path? It wouldn't necessarily be anything on the playable court? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Seeing none. So may I entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for Option Two regarding the storage set? Mr. Elmanyawi, motion, second, Ms. Wilson, all in favor? Okay. Excuse me, I have to count that. Miss Van, one, two, three, four, five, six. That's six in favor. Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, and one abstention. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peckham, and we can now go back to...
Now we can go on to the, the drop-off parking lot.
Okay.
Overall consideration. So we want to talk about options, an option for the parent drop-off. So this first picture you see was the, was the configuration of the main parking lot prior to any modifications being done, and those green islands and gray area between them in the middle is what we removed to gain some parking spots there. And that was a suggestion, actually, of the administration at the high school about how to gain some parking spaces in this lot. So if you go on to the next slide now, you'll see the, see the configuration of the parking lot the way it is now. So you can see that we took out those islands in the middle, and we've, we've gained about 25 parking spaces in this parking lot. And quite honestly, my observational opinion is, it's made a big difference. It used to be you went to the high school and you could never find a park, a parking spot. Now it seems like there's always at least a handful of vacant parking spots in that So then we were looking at, this is the current upper parking lot off of Washington Avenue. You can see a configuration of that, it's just all parking spaces at this point in time, circulate around. You can see the stair that we built going from that parking lot down to the lower parking lot. The proposal that we have is a way to get parents off of Washington Avenue. So if we go to the next slide, you can see how we're proposing to have cars come in off of Washington Avenue, loop to the right and around the parking lot, and then on the upper and left-hand side of that parking lot, we would build a sidewalk. So there'd actually be a sidewalk for drop-off and pickup along there. Cars could circulate around along the sidewalk. The lanes would be wide enough, so if somebody was still dropping off along the sidewalk and you were done, you could pull out around them and get around and come out, and then exit back out onto Washington Avenue. We did have an option where we had another entrance in off of Washington Avenue, but there's questions about city approval for that, plus the additional cost for that. We didn't necessarily feel that it was going to provide enough added benefit to go through the process and the cost of doing that. So you can see here in the, even with losing these parking spaces, we're going to lose about 16 spaces in this lot, because on the left-hand side, there's a row of parking right now. But we've gained 25 in the lower lot, so we have a net gain of nine as soon as we implement this, and then another gain of 39 when we do the parking lot where the trailers currently are. So you, even by doing this, we're getting a net gain of 48 spaces on the campus. So if we look at what the cost implications of this are, we've already talked about the credits for deleting what we, what we had originally bid. That is about $137, yeah, about $137,000 total. Turner Construction has done estimates, so they have a ROM for what we're calling Option A, which would be to use and make those modifications to the upper parking lot, but not make a second entrance in from Washington Avenue, and that would cost about $95,000. If we did want to do the second entrance in off of Washington Avenue and go through the process with the city to make sure that would be approved, estimating that would be about another $30,000 for $125,000 total. So our recommendation is to go with Option A without the separate entrance. Nothing we do now would preclude that extra entrance from being done in the future. Nothing we do now would preclude that extra entrance from being done in the future. And nothing we're doing now would preclude anything else, would impact anything else that may be done along Washington Avenue in the future, but give us a relatively immediate way for the school to be able to accommodate drop-off and pickup. And talking with Ms. Commerford, she has implemented some days, they actually do direct cars into there particularly for pickup so that they can keep them off of Washington Avenue. So our recommendation is to proceed with option A.
Colleagues, oh, yes, Dr. Shador, questions, comments, et cetera?
So I know I probably asked this before, I'm gonna ask it again anyways. Is, could, what would happen if you have an option C? Where I know there's an incline between the upper parking lot and the lower parking lot, but you can still make a path from the top to the bottom. So people come in through Washington Avenue and leave off, exit off of Main. So that creates a loop and it prevents the situation where somebody is gonna double park. And now you've got everybody jamming up that one entrance. Instead, this creates a nice streamlined flow around that campus.
It is a pretty significant grade change between those two areas. The other concern with that is that now all of the traffic is fighting the Chestnut Street entrance because that is, you'd have all the parents coming in to drop off there. You have all the staff coming in there to do that. And then you have the buses looping around and going out that way. So it would really create a bottleneck, additional traffic coming in from that side of the campus.
You're saying going out Chestnut?
Going out.
Out, not in.
Since one way, you come in through Washington Avenue and you only exit through onto Main. Back up again?
I understand what you're saying. Yeah, number two or three?
I totally get the fact that there's a big incline. But I mean, look at the parking garages that we park in, right? Albany Med for one, I mean, it's, those are some steep inclines. People are used to driving on those. And if you have the right safety, it should not be a challenge.
Can I, can I time one thing in on that very topic? One thing I like about that idea, although I am, I do think we really wanna think hard about the traffic complications because, so I'm gonna share two thoughts. Thought one, life at the intersection of Chestnut Street and North Main is considerably better now than it used to be, right? It used to be a very dangerous intersection because parents were coming in and out, staff was coming in, buses, I think, were coming in and out, and walkers were coming in from every direction at that completely unsignaled intersection. So it was very, very dangerous. And now it's much less dangerous because the parents are not using that Chestnut Street entrance at all. So you have staff going in, but pretty much nobody is leaving the North Main entrance. And because there's no signal there, and I guess they looked at that, I can't remember, but I believe they looked at that, and the problem is it's too close to the signal at Washington. But it is much safer now. So I would have some hesitation about contributing there. But one thing I like about that idea is despite the fact that I did ask for the staircase, I wish I was an architect because I would've been smart enough to ask for a ramp instead because I realized we created a non-handicapped accessible situation here. So right now, only people who can use stairs can navigate from one parking lot to the other. And so if Shador's, Dr. Shador's idea was implemented, it would allow a secondary entrance from one parking lot to the other that would be accessible for folks who are not able to handle stairs.
Rich, did you wanna?
I don't think we'd get a handicapped accessible ramp at the right slope through there. You might, but again, the, if we'd done a ramp where we put the stairs, obviously that's way too steep to do a ramp. So if you put the ramp at the other end, we already had basically a ramp connection there in gravel. Nobody went that way. So if you put a, if you put a ramp in instead of the stairs, people would've still walked down the slope where the stairs are.
Sure, so, but, but a car could drive that where the gravel path had been, right? There was, that wasn't so steep that a car couldn't drive on it.
No, a car could drive that.
So it could create the connection he was talking about?
I think, I think the other question on creating a drop-off is if you were to do that, you probably want people coming in, going to the right and going down along the right-hand side of the main parking lot.
Absolutely.
Now we've pushed the drop-off of students another 150 feet from the entrance to the building.
Microphone, Spaz. Why can't they come in, make a left, drop off at the left and go this way? Like that, use your, use where you had the drop-off currently, just the same way? Just then when they leave, just, you know?
So I have a, before Ms. Wilson, so I tell you what, I think, we did talk about this a little bit, I think, in the committee. One of the reasons I don't necessarily like the idea is I am not certain that people will be cognizant of their speed going, because, you know, they're already in a hurry trying to get by. And so now you've got a slight little, you know, hill. You pick up speed and kids or students, parents, whoever are parking on this side, walking out of their cars and crossing over. Now you've got another engagement with pedestrians. And then, you know, I'm going, well, if I can do that, why don't I just go ahead in Chestnut Avenue, you know, and loop around somehow if I can, you know? I'm just, I worry about people doing other things that unintended, you know, that we don't think should be a, we don't wanna create more problems. This is kinda what I'm getting at.
Well, we can have the right signage and we can have things like speed cutters or whatever, right?
So here's the other thing I wanted to ask, and then before, there were a couple of other hands. I don't know what that cost is. Does that, but is it worth doing, pursuing the cost? Is that cost gonna now take us over? Is this something that we could consider later if it looks like, if we do more study on it? See what I'm saying? We, we've got a plan, we can stay with it, and we might be able to do this at some other point if, for instance, we are doing, you know, if we do this, if we make some other changes. I don't know, I'm just trying to...
I'm just trying to get...
We're trying to get to, here's the thing, I'm just worried about delaying things now a bit further.
I get that, so that's what's my question, is like how soon can we find out? If it's gonna take two months to figure that out, then time is of the essence. If it's a week, we can wait.
I know, I know, I'm getting there, hold on. And I saw, was there a question down there, Ms. Wilson? I think you were first, then Ms. Creachey.
I don't wanna prolong it, like I think you kinda landed where I understand the suggestion. And I think because what the proposal on the table was, was keeping what we have and investigating all these other things, I would like to investigate what Shador suggested. And I think we have an ongoing conversation with the city anyway to see what other configurations we can come up with.
Ms. Creachey?
Oh, thank you so much. I had a quick question about something that I really liked in this proposed plan that on the one hand I thought might be pretty inexpensive, but I did have a question about. It is this little sign at the exit that says right turn only at the exit. It seems like it would be pretty inexpensive to put up a sign that says right turn only at the exit. But my question is relevant to the earlier discussion we had with our council about the city's role versus the district's role. Would we need to get permission from the city to prohibit left turns out of that lot?
I think we talked about that, yeah.
But could we do that anyway, just as a way to make things a little safer now?
I don't think you'd have to get city approval to put up a sign that said right turn only. You'd probably need city approve. They might not enforce it because they're pulling out from essentially a private property, not a city property.
We've already done that at other schools with no city approval for sure. Because I know we did that at Montessori within the last three years. So if we needed city approval, we did not get it.
So it would be more a recommendation, but most people don't know that? And so it would just be a deterrent? Okay, that's helpful, I appreciate that, thank you guys.
And do we just talk about some, there would be some signage there, right? I thought we had a discussion about this and maybe I'm missing it. We didn't, yeah, okay. So, Ms. Mann, did you, okay, Ms. Savage, please?
So first of all, I kinda like Shador's idea, but that really wasn't my idea. Like I didn't come in here thinking, oh, I really wanna talk about a ramp down to the other thing because I am very worried about that Chestnut-North Main intersection because that was kinda rough. I like, Ellen wanted to comment on something that I like about the plan in particular, which is the thing that's marked, if we can move forward to the actual slide, which is slide 15, it's marked sidewalk added to connect to Washington Avenue. There's just like a little strip of sidewalk there on the bottom left that I think is really necessary for us to do no matter what we do. One more, there we go. Sidewalk added to connect to Washington Avenue. Right now, that, where those like six panels are, there's nothing. And like, it's just gonna be a mud pit every spring, it's terrible. So I just, it just wasn't a great design originally. What do they call it, where you create a path where people walk, you know, goat path? But there's another term for, in planning language, there's like a plan of intention or something. There's some plan, but that's where the kids are gonna walk and the people are gonna walk. So that, we definitely need that. But the rest of the sidewalk and even the omission of the parking places, I would like to know if it's actually needed. I'm there only occasionally and only in the morning, very, very rarely in the afternoon in that lot. But I have never seen more than three or four cars doing the drop. I don't see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 cars all at once. I see two or three. And I think it's a lot of money to spend to add that sidewalk on those two sections. It's like, what, I think it's $90,000? Am I right, $95,000? That seems like a lot to add those two sections of sidewalk if they're not needed. And we're doing this right now with no change to the striping. This is what's actually happening, people are doing this and the signs are very clear, please go this way. So I'm just not convinced that we should use this $90,000. You had a great, a great statement you made in response to something else. Is this investment larger than needed for this function? You said about some other thing we were talking about earlier. And I kinda feel like that about this. It's not that I think it's a terrible idea, it's just $95,000 to add a sidewalk on two sides of a parking lot and take away 16 parking places so that people can drop right next to that sidewalk instead of dropping where they are right now? I'm not convinced that makes sense and I'm not convinced it makes anyone any safer. I do think we need this, the signage and the striping to make it clear that we want people to turn right and that there's an in and out there. I think that's really essential. And I think that little sidewalk, and we probably need some shrubs or something there because it's gonna be really wonky with lots of little bits of sidewalk, that would be useful. But $95,000 to add sidewalk and take out 16 parking spaces? I just don't understand why we're gonna do that.
So if I might, so can I, I'm just gonna piggyback as well. So let me exercise my chair rule. So I actually disagree. I do think it's safety, I, and again, I don't know if it's because I'm, I have been there a little bit more and at different times. And I, it's really, because it's also a small area, there's still people walking. They get out of their car, they're walking across in front of you. People are trying to back out. And I just feel better, like if I can just pay attention to the cars and people are at the sidewalk level. And again, not that people will do it necessarily, but I prefer to get on the sidewalk, you know, and continue on. I don't know that I prefer the shrubbery there because I think that means security stuff. And we're already, it could be, well, flowers, I don't know if they'll stay, but anyway.
Let's not get into the nitpicky about shrubbery, my point, that's not my point.
No, but I'm just telling you my perspective. I'm not arguing plants or not, but I'm just, I'm really just saying I like this arrangement and I'm just offering my opinion about it in terms of the safety and aesthetics and what I think we're trying to accomplish here. Now, the other thing I was gonna say about, you know, again, I think we have with this lower lot addition of spaces, I don't know if it makes sense and it would be tough. Like people could park along this edge on the left within certain hours. I think that's just like, I wouldn't go for that. I would just like, I'd have parking spaces there or I wouldn't have parking spaces there. So anyway, that's, those are just my thoughts. Ms. Wilson and then Mr. Elmanyawi?
I'm so sorry, I was, I'm not, no longer going to piggyback on that comment because I think the point and counterpoint has been made. So I'll just go to the question again about Shador's suggestion, which either way I'm neutral on still. But I think it just goes back to what we discussed very early on in this conversation is the flow of traffic. And that's just another concern that I would like to push, like just put a pin in, so to speak. Because I'm wondering if you're saying that people will come in off of Washington and then loop on Main. But it just seems that when we were coming up with this concept, especially with like a partridge cut earlier on, that we just felt that the traffic didn't yield us the results that we would want for that. And it's not something anyone has to respond to, but it's something, again, why I'm leaning towards what was recommended and we investigate all these suggestions.
Okay, and Mr. Elmanyawi, please?
So I don't wanna belabor the point. I honestly think that if we do something other than what is being presented right now, it's gonna require a much deeper analysis. And that what this provides is essentially we're trying to convince people to use it. If people did use it, it would be better than what there is now. So I personally do support this because with the, without the time or, you know, I guess, exercise of looking at all of the other options, speaking with the city and doing all this other stuff, that this is really heading in the right direction. It's, and it's not doing nothing. So I would support this. And I also just don't wanna, I don't wanna cut this short, but I also do know that we have other folks waiting. So if it's, maybe we push this off for a further discussion or like we think about it and we come back and vote on it. But I don't know if we're gonna pull any more info out.
So Mr. Opperman, just before you go, the other, oh gosh, I almost lost it, I almost lost it. Go ahead, there was another point about that I wanted to make.
I certainly appreciate the comments that have been made. And I believe that with the understanding that we would need to table this at our next meeting. So just a little bit about schedule. The design for whatever we would do, for whatever option we wanna implement, would need to be complete no later than February for the build that would happen in the spring. Turner has already made that clear to us. And we wanna give our partners at CSARCH enough time and their consultants to get the design documents together. So with the understanding that we could do that, I think we could look at this alternate concept and we could come back with some thoughts, pros, cons about both. The one comment I wanted to make relative to the sidewalk. The sidewalk is all about getting kids out of harm's way, that's all it is. You know, just like we do in any area where there's traffic, right? Getting the kids up on the sidewalk, away from the vehicle traffic, it's as simple as that. Last comment relative to cost. It does sound like a lot of money, but we have to remember our friends at Turner are very conservative in their estimates. So I would like to believe that the actual cost would be less. But when we're at this stage, the concept stage, we always try to be conservative with our rough order of magnitude.
Thank you. I just, again, I know it's getting late, but I just have this question. So Ms. Savage, and I'm not picking on you, but when you have described being there and you're not seeing the usage, I think, of the lot in the way that you are, then it means that people are doing something else. What are, what are people doing if they're not utilizing the lot? And what's, what's our analysis of that situation?
Well, I think, I think the key thing is that I don't think we actually have done an analysis of that. Like I don't think my anecdotal experience or anyone's anecdotal experience is really demonstrative. And that's why, to my mind, maybe the right thing is to do that analysis and figure out what people are doing and how many cars we really do need to handle. And I, the question I have for Mr. Oppenheimer is, that's not right, I got it wrong. Is that your last name, did I do it right? No, do it, the movie got me. Opperman, and the movie got me, I'm sorry. I know that, is, okay, if we miss this build, then what? Because really that to me is the question, is I hear what everyone is saying, I am understanding it. And I just know that what I'm, what I'm seeing, and we don't have analysis to back this up. And I think we should do that analysis in a very, and I've spoken about this at length. We should be doing a real study of... We should be doing a real study of how many cars are actually dropping off and how many cars are picking up and how many buses and how many pedestrians and thinking hard about the right thing to do for our city, for the neighbors, for the students, for the staff. And we're going to spend $95,000 before we do that study. And that's what's bothering me about this. It's not that I think it's a terrible idea. It's fine. It's just, it does feel premature because we haven't done that analysis. But if you want to know what I'm actually seeing, what I'm actually seeing is a handful of cars going in the lot at a time and they're coming out. They go, they go in, they come out, they go in, they come out. A lot of people are using it. It's just doesn't back up the way it is shown here with 10 or 12 cars at a time. So there are people who are still dropping off in the front. There are people dropping off all up and down Washington Avenue, people parking in front of the, uh, the Reserve Center, people parking as far down as the turf, people parking right in front of the school, wherever people can find a spot, which is what we've been doing in the city for the entire time Albany High has been in that location is, you know, people drop off in front of the school. So I, I think that's likely to continue until and unless we do something pretty dramatic. And again, I'm not opposed to this. I just feel like it's premature and maybe not the best use of our money.
Is there anyone else on this subject? And yes, Ms. Crechi.
So as, as a high school parent that does typically drop off a couple of days a week, that's also been my anecdotal experience. I have a child who begs me to drop him off in front of the school and I explain to him, we've been told not to and I'm a board member, so I really cannot drop you off in front of the school. I will be pulling into this parking lot and dropping you off where I'm supposed to. But it is always a handful of cars compared to the large number that are parked in front of the school or sometimes even double parked in front of the school. And while the sidewalk would be a nice addition, definitely, I'm not sure it would change behavior that much. So I would really like to see, we, I would really like to see us take the time to do a professional analysis of the traffic and the pedestrian, and the pedestrians, et cetera, to get, to get to the right solution because we're trying to build a school that's going to uh, stay around for 50 years or so. So we'd really like to get it, get it right and do something that ideally will contribute to a safer community and a better, better way to get kids in the building safely.
Related to this?
Yes, related to this, yes. So even though I don't have a kid to drop off at the high school this year, I drive by Albany High during the mornings and I, I do have seen that traffic is not as bad as it was last year. But people still double park. People still do those, some of those bad habits that we are trying to avoid. It's no different from driving through the one-way sign to the track where it clearly says one-way. And you know, you, you're going this way and you see people coming the other way and you're like.
Okay. And I know we have to call this one to close and someone can put forth a motion. But I think also if, if what, if what you're saying is also true. I mean, I don't know then if extending the road all the way down to Chestnut is really going to make a difference. If people are still going to do what they're going to do. But anyway. Don, yes. And then we need to make some sort of motion.
Thank you. Yeah, just a thought process. So understand all the comments that have been made. Just want to make clear that the thought process the team used in developing this concept was do something to make the current situation better. We know there's no perfect solution and we now know that there's no way that we can mandate a solution in front of the school as was originally designed, right? That's been made clear. So whether it's this option, whether it's an option that you suggest or even another option that we've already considered or a concept on the east side of the complex, I'm afraid that all of the comments still apply, right? Where if we do nothing, we will be left with exactly what we have now.
So would someone like to make a motion if you're ready for it?
Can I just get the answer to my question from before? Which is what does happen if we miss the plan? Like you said, if we miss this timeframe, we're going to miss the spring build. So then, then what?
We're still doing construction in the summer of '25, so it just gets, there may, Turner may be concerned with the amount of construction we're trying to do in the summer of '25, but the contractors will still be there.
So if we were to miss this bidding opportunity, that we would be delayed till the following summer because this is outside exterior work. But, but that's a plausible outcome is that we do some deeper analysis, slows it down, makes us miss the window, but then we end up doing it the following year. Okay.
Are we ready to entertain a motion? And I, someone would have to make one for consideration. And I don't know what direction you want to start in. Dr. Shatur, did you want to?
I mean, I, I'll make a motion to table it till we get some more information. We, you know, what the cost of the timeframe would be for another option. What would it take to do an analysis, to at least get the information? It's going to take an year to do the analysis. It's going to cost $100,000 to do it. Well, now we know that it's not in our budget. Then we have to, we have no other choice. But at least it'll be an informed decision.
Okay. Mr. Almanyawi?
All right. So I don't know if this is, is there a motion on?
On the table? That is a motion.
To table it, to get an analysis, a quote on an analysis.
And the other options, you know, get, get a price and timeframe.
The purpose of tabling it would be to get, your motion is to table this discussion until we obtain additional information that incorporates the suggestion that you made tonight and perhaps some other factors. Yep.
Okay. And the analysis, like.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, that's what I mean.
I would, I would second that motion.
Okay. All in favor of this motion? I have one, two, three, four, five, six. That's six. And one, no. Thank you. Motion carries. So we will table this and we'll now, and I guess we'll, we'll wait, we had canceled our meeting and for next week, which is, which is fine, the committee meeting, because I don't think we can expect that anyway at that point. So we're good. But we will look to our January meeting or thereafter. Okay. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Who is that with that deep sigh? Oh, his sigh? Okay. Okay. And next up, we have a discussion, uh, transportation. And I appreciate your patience, gentlemen, with, especially with First Student. Thank you. So come, you, come on up. That'd be great. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Good. Thank you again for being patient. I bet your phone rings early though, doesn't it?
Building, building and parking lots, um, for experts.
Good evening. Thanks very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I, uh, since we last spoke this evening, I have it on good authority that Santa has completed his checklist list and he's good to go. I'm going to make just a couple of very quick introductions and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Miles to take us through the majority of the presentation. Then I and our friends from First Student will, uh, will, will jump in at the end and we're all glad to answer questions when we get there. Dr. Miles, as you know, is our transportation director. And from First Student tonight, we have Brian Fitzgerald, who's a senior regional vice president, if I got that close enough. And Joe Petrazek is the area general manager. So they're here to talk with us about their operation tonight. And I'll let Mr. Miles move us forward.
Just to start, I wanted to have a status report, just provide some stats. We're currently at 73 routes assigned to First Student. And we have onboarded a new vendor, at least in the short term, with one route going to Raja. It is a wheelchair route, just to point that out. And though there are 74 routes, the majority of those routes have multiple schools assigned to them. We are using a tiered, a tiered system. We have our eight o'clock starts along with our nine o'clock starts. And as you can see, a majority of our routes are dedicated to transporting special needs students. We also have a fair amount of routes that are going out of district. And I'll touch on that piece a little bit later in the presentation. And we're transporting upwards of 300 students on those routes. And they're, they mainly consist of our McKinney-Vento population as well as out-of-district SPED programs. And just to provide a little bit of info on, on our Albany First Student vendor here, our location manager is Matt. He's currently in the process of transitioning from Antiora to us here in Albany. He's currently splitting time as, you know, they're having a little bit of issues themselves. And to be fair, to First Student, we did onboard the location manager, Tamika Powell. And again, I'll touch on her a little bit later in the presentation as well. So they're in a little bit of, just a transitioning phase where they have to replace Matt's counterpart before they, you know, get him here full-time. But on this side, the biggest takeaway is just the pre-pandemic driver and staff numbers. You know, we were having upwards of 90-plus drivers coming back to school when I first came onboard. We saw that number drop almost 20% from 97 down to 79. As of November, we currently have 73 drivers rostered for, for First Student. You know, as those driver numbers decline, we did have to consolidate some runs and, you know, drop our number of routes. As you consolidate runs, you can expect, you know, longer duration on those routes. Kind of what Mrs. Frazier spoke to earlier in our meeting. As we have new drivers assigned or sub-drivers assigned, that kind of does open us up to driver error where they're not going to be as familiar with students' locations or family habits or whatever the case may be. We certainly do try to be mindful when we are assigning drivers to routes. But unfortunately, there are certainly things that can happen as we do implement those new sub-drivers. Currently, again, this is just some, uh, some of their equipment stats. And I also provided some ridership numbers, just to give us a little bit of context as we kind of get through this update here. Currently have 30 large buses in service, 49 smaller mini buses. They have eight wheelchair and newly added two minivans. And I'll be touching on that here in a little bit as well. You know, technically our large buses can seat up to 72 kids. We do try to limit that capacity somewhere between 67 and 70, and even that's a little bit high. Right now, our largest route is actually out of a, um, non, uh, non-district school with KIP. They currently have 67 students assigned to that route. Within our district, our largest route is out of AIC, which currently has 62 students assigned. So those numbers are the assigned numbers. That doesn't necessarily mean that there are 67 or 62 students riding every day. Just to touch quickly on our ridership numbers. We did see a little bit of a dip from this November to last November. But I'll touch on a little bit. We still are seeing a high number of route changes per week. Just to go over some of our challenges that we're seeing this year. Like, as you can imagine, I'm sure it's, you know, nothing new. Definitely something that we're experiencing in our district and just nationwide is our driver shortage. Still not seeing the number of candidates applying that we would like to and certainly not enough candidates applying that would put us in a, a, a better position or put a dent into what we have going here in our operation. Driver attendance is a daily obstacle. And that's where we're running into situations where we are assigning that sub-driver to a route, opening us up to some driver errors where we may have a driver that's not familiar with a special needs student, doesn't understand that, you know, dad may be in the house waiting for kiddo to get dropped off. And it's not just release the student without, without seeing that parent. When we, when we do experience those callouts or the no-shows, you know, we're forced to scramble and find creative ways to cover everything. Usually this leads to drivers having to double up or sometimes even triple up on runs. And that leads to our inconsistency in our pickup times as well as our drop-off times. And I know that really impacts our special needs students as consistency is key to their success. So as we are dealing with callouts, no-shows, you know, various obstacles that do come along, that certainly is hindering some of their, you know, some of their success getting to school. As we attempt to discipline our staff for attendance and various other reasons, at times we do have to suspend or terminate. And we kind of find ourselves in a cycle of as we are onboarding new drivers and new monitors, we're at the same time losing monitors or drivers due to poor performance or poor attendance. Following up our driver shortage, I think my next biggest challenge is our social emotional behaviors that we're experiencing on the bus. Some of these behaviors are leading to an unsafe environment and just adding additional pressure on the First Student as they're not only worried about the students onboard, they're oftentimes worried about their own personal safety. You know, our drivers are having to pull over to manage behaviors and escalated situations just to try to regain control. That's also going to lead to delays along the route. My, my main concern with, with behaviors is just, um, you know, as we're experiencing the chemistry issues between students, we're having to generate more routes, routes to keep those students separated. We're already struggling with the number of routes and drivers that we have right now. So for a couple of students to be living in the same exact area of town, sometimes even on the same street and not being able to ride together and we have to find a alternative way to get them home or to school, just puts a ton of pressure on, on our First Student staff down there. And it also leads to retention and recruiting problems. I'm sure Joe and Brian will kind of get more into retention and recruiting. But we've certainly seen a handful of drivers, um, you know, just kind of hit their wits end and decided to walk away before escalating or having a situation get out of, get out of control on them. Moving on, another issue that I'm having right now is the number of McKinney-Vento out-of-district placements. As our, you know, temporarily homeless and McKinney-Vento's number rise, our in-city shelters are reaching capacity. And as we continue to see that number increase, they're having to get placed in Schenectady, Troy, Hudson. Like there's, uh, it's, we're, we're kind of going all over the place. And this puts again, this puts added pressure on not only the drivers in First Student, but just the families and the students having to travel, you know, such far lengths, both in the morning as well, as well as their way home. And we're already struggling with our in-city performance. So having to go further away from our district is only going to, you know, add, add to our struggles. Similar to our McKinney-Vento situation, we're also seeing a trend of increasing SPED students being placed in programs outside of the district. Again, kind of touches on the same things here. We're, we're struggling within the city of Albany. So to now have to go outside the city of Albany to bring our SPED students to out-of-district programs, it's only adding, only adding pressure on its operation. Similarly with our increasing ridership. As those numbers increase, we're having to increase the number of stops. Going, coming into the year, a big thing I talked to my team about was kind of playing hardball and limiting, limiting the number of stops and increasing walking distance for parents and families. That was going to be in a way to try to overcome some of our on-time performance. Just in having conversations with families, that seems to be creating a barrier or obstacle for them. So, you know, I, I don't want to get in the business of making things harder for our families. And unfortunately, that means we do have to increase those number of stops, which are only going to lead to longer, longer rides and longer duration. I'm sorry, I'm trying to be as concise and get straight to the point. Some of the things that we're doing to combat the driver shortage. Currently, there are 11 drivers in training. We have two aides onboarding and a couple others through various stages of, of their training right now. One of the things that I've tried to do to kind of get ahead of some of our challenges is start my day at First Student space. Obviously, my direct report is the director of communications. So communication is going to be a big priority for our operation. So if I'm able to be onsite and I can recognize if a driver's going to be out, if I can recognize if a driver's running late, if I can identify bus issues, whatever the case may be, I can get that communications out to our families at a faster rate. And I can certainly understand their frustration, you know, like I talked about, just the inconsistent times. And there's just a lot of things that are out of our control, unfortunately. But trying to explain that to a parent who has a job to get to, who has things that they need, that they need to worry about, you know, I can, I can certainly understand their plight there. But one of the things that we are doing, we are having daily status checking calls with our AM and PM dispatcher, both myself as well as my team. We're also confirming daily rollouts, just as simply as making sure that they are sending me a list of what drivers are assigned to what routes in what buses. of what drivers are assigned to what routes and what buses. Same thing as we talked about a little bit earlier with Ron here, him and his team. They do a really good job of taking the information that I'm giving them as far as delays or callouts, whatever the case may be, and putting that information through our School Messenger tool. And that allows us to send blasts out to the entire route that we are going to be running delayed on that particular day. Another thing that I am really big on is making sure that every family who's having issues or consistent issues has my direct extension and has my direct cellphone number. At this point, I would probably say half of Albany reaches out to me. But it's just a way to, you know, try to support them, let them know that I am trying to do everything that we can to fix the issues that we are experiencing. And same thing with school staff. I know they're feeling the pressures from the families and from students as well. So just making sure that they have access to me at all times if they need to reach out. In regards to recruitment and retention from First Student, they still are offering a $5,000 sign-on bonus for CDL holders, $4,000 sign-on bonus for non-CDL owners. They also have a $500 sign-on bonus for aides and monitors, as well as a $2,500 employee referral bonus. They offer paid training, annual, I'm sorry, bi-annual attendance bonuses. And they also have brought on a full-time recruiter for our school districts, which I think is huge. In regards to what's being done now, as I mentioned, they did bring in two minivans, which helps in several different ways. One of the things that it does is it helps in regards to recruitment and retention. Previous to this year, those drivers who only had their N2 restrictions, they had to wait till they got their full CDL before they could go on and become drivers. And they were earning, you know, monitor wages, where now they have the opportunity to still get behind the wheel, get driver wages while at the same time learning about our operation. In addition to the, you know, recruitment piece, it also allows us to reassign our current drivers. Before, we were sending large buses sometimes, or even our mini buses, way out of district for one or two students. Now we can just utilize that minivan driver, have them handle that route, and we can utilize our large buses to stay within our city. We also, I know we've been dealing with, you know, some challenges on our athletic side. We did just put out a RFB. We are getting responses back, which was, you know, a really good thing for us. But on top of that, it kind of just gave us the insight to what options are available from some of our other vendors. As I mentioned before, we have entered into an emergency contract with Reha. They are taking on six of our wheelchair students right now, which would be two wheelchair routes. So we were able to reassign those First Student drivers. We were to put those kids and consolidate those kids on one single Reja route. And now we've been able to reassign those to handle other routes for us and fill in those gaps. We will be going out, just to kind of give you a little bit of a heads up, we will be going out here for RFB, for that particular Reha contract, because right now they're just in an emergency contract. For our long-term efforts, we will be going out for an RFP starting for next school year. As I mentioned, the RFB that we did for our athletics bid gave us a little bit of insight to what's available, what vendors are interested, what vendors have the capacity to take on some of our school district routes. I'm constantly in conversations with alternative vendors to fill in the gaps. Just unfortunately, it's not just a First Student problem. It's not just the Albany City School District problem. It's not even just a New York State problem. This is something that everyone, everywhere is facing throughout the nation. I am optimistic that we will see our driver pool increase as inflation and other financial factors, you know, motivate workers to get back into the labor force. I'm sure Brian and Joe may touch on it. But, you know, that may come with higher wages at a certain point. And we also are looking into our App Sue, or working with App Sue to bring on some of our drivers and monitors to work inside of our school building. I know it's been an ongoing conversation. We have been speaking with some union presidents, and we are hoping to make some progress on that end. Another piece here is we are looking into, and I know we spoke about it last update here, looking into potentially bringing on a couple fourteen-passenger Sprinter vans. Still an ongoing conversation. We aren't there just yet, but certainly in the works. And we are taking, I think we are taking the proper steps to further those conversations and narrow down what exactly we need to do to get that across the finish line. Some successes, and I try to be careful with, you know, with triumphs and successes just given how rocky the start of the year has been. But one of the things I am proud of is coming into the school year, a big complaint from our First Student staff was they just didn't feel heard by our district. They felt that they weren't getting the proper support. And everything was kind of being just thrown under the rug, and they were just having to deal with everything on their own. So what we did was we did put together a training session. But it was disguised as a training session, but it was really just for some moral support and allow First Student an opportunity to get in front of our special education staff and just explain what their, you know, day-to-day consists of. It also gave the staff an opportunity to train them on some strategies that are used inside the building. So that way, everyone's using the same language, using the same tactics. Kids become familiar with these and helps them de-escalate. Another thing that First Student is going to be doing is they are launching a pilot program called First Serves. We actually have a meeting coming up on the eighteenth. And it's just a special education program just to provide additional communication. It's also research-based training to align with district and parent to support our students. There's an advisory board trained of experts to provide behavior or management tools. The biggest thing is just to de-escalate. That's something that we're seeing almost on a daily basis. Kids getting up to, you know, just becoming triggered for whatever reason, wherever the event may be, whether it be another student, something that happened at home, something that happened in the building. Just want to make sure that First Student monitors and staff are equipped to handle whatever may come their way, especially as we're going to be looking to onboard new staff and new personnel. Definitely want to make sure that they're prepped for all that may come at them. Another thing I'm really proud of, and I talked about it earlier, is, I don't want to say stealing, but, bringing Tamika Powell, she was the previous location manager at First Student. I can't speak enough about her knowledge, her understanding of not only First Student, obviously, but of her, you know, just her experience working with the district. Me and her, we've been able to form a really good relationship. I admire her work ethic, and I think that she's been a great addition to my team, no doubt about it. And it's bringing her on because she has that manager experience, because she has both the driver, monitor, dispatching, everything you can think of, she's kind of been through. So that allows me more time to deal with vendors, allows me to go ahead and have conversations with a host of different people. And it's no coincidence that within our first couple of months of coming onboard, we've been able to generate an RFB as well as look into going out for another RFB within our Reja contract. And to kind of switch gears and talk about some of our CDTA issues, if you will. Just looking, I provided some stats here with the total eligible riders from this quarter. Certainly, we seem to be down just slightly from last year. We were at two fifty-four out of our Hackett Building. Out of Myers, we are down as well. North Albany seems to went up as far as eligible riders. Similar with Albany High, they also had an increase in riders. And additionally, it looks like AIC has also gone up in ridership. In my conversation with CDTA, I think we found a way to generate reports that detail specific data related to each building. I know in our last update, that was something that you were interested in. I think we finally got there. I'm waiting for a response. I had a conversation with my contact over there a little bit earlier this morning. And it seems promising what they're going to be able, what they're going to be able to give back to us. One of the issues that we were looking into was just our swiper cards, as well as our printers, seemed to be outdated. But as we were kind of going through the numbers there, and I got to give a lot of credit to the IT team for kind of pointing this out, it may seem like there's a high variance of card errors. But when you actually break down the numbers, it only comes down to about one percent of issues that we're seeing with our cards. So that was fantastic to kind of, and CDTA was able to generate that data for us. So we're hoping that we can utilize and lean on them to provide us more information that they haven't been in the past. And again, just having that data, we can partner with them and we can just have more insight as to, you know, what adjustments need to be made, where we're seeing overcrowded routes, and what can be done to try to solve some of those problems. I did also want to point out on this slide, we are seeing an increase in our non-district and private provokial and charter school ridership, which was interesting, as well as, you know, our total district eligible riders and numbers have gone up this year as well. Some of the challenges we are seeing on our CDTA routes, again, is our social and emotional behavioral concerns. I had had several follow-up conversations with CDTA, CDTA as well as other district staff regarding some of the behavioral problems that we are seeing. I attended a Myers PTSA meeting, and that was the main concern is just the, you know, we have a lot of students who are new to middle school, who are, for the first time, experiencing some of middle school behavior, if you will. So just trying to talk them through what that looks like. And, you know, we have partnered with CDTA and they have approved our CTA ambassador program. I know that last year, that was just in the talking and planning phase, where now I'm really excited to see that being implemented this year. And I think that's going to be a huge benefit to our students here. They too are also experiencing a driver shortage. They've onboarded thirty-five new drivers since August, but they still remain almost fifty drivers short of what they were, what they're hoping to be at.
Thank you. I'm going to provide updates on just a few other areas quickly. Child safety zones is a topic that we are, as you know, working on this year. In October, the state finally caught up with the, state regulations finally caught up with the state law with the new criteria that was implemented in law in 2021, adding violent crime and vacant properties to criteria that we can consider. We are working with the City of Albany to research that data and get the data that we can then apply to determine if we will qualify for more than more child safety zones. And the one we do have currently, there, you know, almost certainly will be additional expenses associated with that. And if that is the case, as we anticipate, we would have to go, we have to get voter approval before moving forward with any implementation there. So the first step is getting the data and then applying it to, applying it to our neighborhoods and the routes that our students follow to get to school. And then working through the process of certifying that data with the city. So we're engaged in all of that currently. I attended the City of Common Council Public Safety Committee's meeting a week ago Wednesday, and they talked about the stop-arm cameras. And the full council approved that ordinance on Monday. We had conversations with First Student beginning of the year, and they've been fully onboard with that to start the year. And the Common Council was very glad to hear that as well. Pending mayoral approval now, we are ready to begin to put an agreement together and move forward with that as soon as possible. So that is, that will be a very important safety step forward for our community. And both the city and the district will engage in communication well in advance of the implementation of that. But I'm sure there will be, I didn't intend this pun, but I stumbled into it, speed bumps with the implementation of that. It'll be a very, it'll be new for our community. So we'll do everything we can to help communicate to ease that implementation. And then electric buses. First Student has folks dedicated to this work, and they continue to seek federal and state funding to convert buses to electric buses and the infrastructure needed to support them onsite. EPA Round Two notification is anticipated early in the new calendar year, and then we are working on our Round Three application currently. Governor Hochul announced last Wednesday that there's $100 million available to school districts in New York for, through the New York School Bus Incentive Program. Albany is a priority district in that work. And First Student's folks are engaged in that research as well. So that's another avenue that we will be pursuing in partnership with them.
I think you took some of my material there, Ron. Good news is, I know it's later in the evening, and truthfully, two of the things I was going to talk about are stop-on electrics. I'll be very brief on those because Ron did cover it very well. First of all, a couple of things for the group. Want to thank this group, particularly Ron and Dorette. It's been a productive partnership, and we are not lost on this quagmire of driver staffing. And it's not where we want to be. Joe's going to talk a little bit about some short-term things, I think, make that better. Not magically disappeared, but better. And then there are some mid- and long-term things. We do believe that make that a very, very different story. So Joe will talk about that. One thing I wanted to do is, in our core values, care for our students is a core value for us. And two things hit me on it today. The first one's exciting, the second one was less exciting. So the less exciting one is both Dorette and I had a chance to kind of sidebar with Ms. Frazier. And some of that was new to Joe and I. We will be following up on that with Dorette and Ron. And I told Ms. Frazier I will personally follow up with her tomorrow. So I'll have her email and her phone, and we'll be doing that. So that was, set us back a little bit. Kind of breaks your heart to hear that, but we will follow up on that. The positive one, though, is I wanted to thank the board and the whole team here. Starting off the meeting with Rashad was perfect. That is the epitome of what the care for the students is. And I do want to thank you all because it's not often that the board and the district and the customer take that time to make what was a very, I think he was tearing up. I mean, that was a very, very special event. So thank you for that. And I will be brief. Stop-arm cameras, I will just say, we've had a long partnership with Bus Patrol. We're doing hundreds of these throughout New York. So I told Ron and Dorette earlier, once the green light comes in, if Ron doesn't fall over, once the green light comes in, it is a two-second, they call us, we let them come and install them, and you're up and running. So that is, we don't have to be first off the boat on that. We're doing that all over the state, so that should be easy. And then Ron covered electric buses. I would just add this, you had to make a decision on this, both as a district and as a company. You could lead, you can kind of hedge, or you could wait. We've made a very clear industry leadership position. We've invested a ton of this. We've gotten folks out of DC, utility experts, you know, some of the smart folks, as I call them, because they're, I think, on a different level. So we've heavily invested in that. And we already have three hundred plus running. And I was going to offer for the team, it's logistically challenging. I took a customer up to one of our yards in Quebec about a month ago to see a yard that is pretty much fully electric and how the charging works. If anybody's ever interested, I can arrange that trip. Again, there's some logistics there, but happy to do that again. But this is, as it always has been, it comes down to who's going to fund this, because it's still not close. And Ron covered it. We, when I talked to you two years ago, we had this one weird project that we never got approval for. We took a swing at round one, that was a lottery, we didn't get picked. I am going to be very disappointed. Round two comes out in January. That was merit-based, and we submitted a New York merit-based one with all the expertise I talked about very openly. You know, other places like Buffalo, I don't know how anybody could have submitted a better. You know, go to Albany, we're going to go to Yonkers, we're going to go to New York City, we're going to Buffalo. So I'm going to be crushed on that one. The third one, unfortunately, went back to a lottery again. So we're submitted for that, but that's less merit-based. So anything that's out there, we're all over. We're working with Ron and Dorette, and it's just a matter of wherever we can get that funding. I will be super excited the day we can unveil the electric buses and all. But it's going to happen. I'm just hoping it's this next round and not a round after that. Hopefully, second time's a charm. Anyway, thank you for putting up with me at late at night.
All right, driver staffing. All right, so different things we're doing in Albany. We took our $5,000 sign-on bonus that was paid monthly. Actually, it was paid over ten months, then we changed it to monthly. I've changed it to weekly for fully licensed drivers. So it'll give a fully licensed driver an extra $250 a week. So we're hoping that's going to be a very good incentive for some of the people that have been on the fence. We did lose some people, we've lost some people. It becomes, you know, there's a very small pool of actual experienced drivers, and every company tries to keep them or entice them or move them around. We did lose a bunch of people. We were, we probably had close to eighty-eight drivers two weeks before school started. And Tamika called me and said, I think we have like seventy-some odd drivers now. We had a bunch of people that left at the eleventh hour. They were afraid we were going to cancel their unemployment.
They were afraid we were going to cancel their unemployment. So they waited until the kickoff meeting to tell us that they were not going to come back. We have started reaching out to, to those people. Some of those people are, are not happy to where they went. So we're, we're trying to get them back. And we're hoping that the sign-on bonus program paying it weekly instead of a, a monthly will, will hope there. Also, the company has a new referral bonus program called Alaro where they can get a two hundred and fifty dollar referral bonus if both them and the employee works for thirty days. It used to be referral bonuses were spread out over a long period of time. They're now, and you can maximize, if you bring ten people in, you can get twenty-five thousand dollars in referral bonuses. So it, it's really, and hopefully bringing people in to bring people, and they don't have to be fully licensed drivers either. They can be people that we can put through our, our training program. You know, currently we have like thirteen people in the training program. We have a couple of experienced drivers coming back. We have a couple of new exciting things that we just started doing. We have a virtual CDL permit program now where it used to be that you would tell somebody, here's the book, study, go down to motor vehicle and get your permit. Well, we're holding their hands now. We're, we're taking them to a virtual, they can stay at home, they can do virtual training where we take them through the permit process, we get them all ready, they get all set to go down and take their permit, but we do that all virtually. We also have virtual classroom training that once we get them in, because sometimes you don't have enough trainers for the amount of people that you bring in, they can start doing their classroom program through virtual also. So those are some great and, you know, exciting things that we have going on. The virtual CDL permit thing is going to be huge because lots of times you hand a person a book and they look at it and go, oh, I'm never going to be able to do this. But if they can call in every day, work with somebody and work towards that permit, you know, that's exactly where, where we want to be. You know, we just did our turkey recognition for the drivers. They all got turkey gift certificates for Thanksgiving. We're going to be doing a holiday party in, in December. And we did a bunch of trips during the summertime, the Six Flags and things like that. We try to do stuff for the drivers and their families as, as much as we can. It's, retention is, is a big thing. And yet, once we get a driver, you never want to let them go. Like, like I said, if Rashad, if I could have a hundred Rashads, I, I told him that the other day. I said, my, my life would be very easy in Albany because people would come to work every day and they'd be great with the kids and they'd be great with the students. And it would be wonderful. But those are some of the programs we're working on for, for driver staffing.
Joe, one, one other thing is, you know, when you're, when you're faced with this, you have to make some decisions. So we, we've had to go invest in some different positions. Recruiter was one. The other one's pretty recent. Joe had a position that supports him from a safety standpoint. It's an area safety manager. And our area safety manager actually came from the state training curriculum background. Fay has, has run and Dorette know. So we actually pulled Fay off backfiller and added a complete role where all Fay's working on is training efficiencies to make sure that, you know, Joe says lead them to water. It's, it's, so Fay's maniacally focused on that. Frankly, across a group of sites that I have in the area, but that, that's a plus one that we realized was an inevitable move we had to make. I realize it is a little later in the day or night. So I, any, any questions on electric vehicles, staffing?
Great. Be glad to take your questions. Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted, that was a lot of information. And, but, I mean, I think, I know I got it, but I mean, that was a lot. And I, from each one of you, thank you so much. One second here. Ms. Mann, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Hey, it's more of a comment. I remember six, seven years ago, we were talking about the stop-arm cameras and now they're actually happening. That's fantastic. So.
And it's been, been a real push for the, the last couple of years.
Yeah. No, fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely. I see Ms. Cratchey's hand. Go ahead.
Sure. I just had a question regarding the use of the smaller minivans. You were saying that, if I understand correctly, that the minivans, you, you've realized the best practice is rather than have a permanent route, a permanent driver on the minivan routes, it's a place to put the drivers that are in training while they're getting the CDL lessons?
Yeah, yeah. It's basically, they're two license, they're just basically, they just basically upgrade their license. They can ride a caravan. It's, it's like a seven-passenger van and they only need like, what's it called, a chauffeur's license.
I think I understand.
Yeah, they still need to do drug tests and background and, and physical and all that stuff. But they don't need a CDL license for it. They need a.
I, I think I understood. My question was for the midday route, the midday shuttle routes between the middle school and the high school, are those typically some of the minivan routes? Those are, those are the yellow buses. Okay.
This is for like your one and two kids that maybe go to Massachusetts or.
Oh, okay. Because I was, I was trying to figure out, I know we've had some issues with the shuttle buses between, with the shuttles between the middle school and the high school. And I was thinking, okay, that might explain, that explains why, but it sounds like there's more kids on the, there's a small handful of kids enough to have a minibus. And that those minivans are more for smaller, like the MV, the MVs are.
One or two kids going to a longer distance.
Understood.
Saves on fuel and also frees us up a, a larger vehicle to use.
Makes a lot, makes a lot of sense and that's a smart way to do it.
Yeah. And we worked, and we worked with Dorette, we had to find some, some caravans and that was never in your original proposal to have caravans. So we basically had to have district approval to, to get that started.
Nice. And I was excited about the idea of even potentially having district minivans and district employees for some of those smaller ones to kind of fill in the gaps. So thank you.
Ms. Savage?
Thank you for the presentation, all of you. I know you guys are working really hard and it's like the, it's like the currents are against you and you're fighting all the time. So we recognize that the outcome is not what you want it to be and that that's not any result of the work that's going in. So I just want you to know that I think we all are very aware that this is a national challenge and that you're doing the best you can under the circumstances. Like Board Member Mann was saying, one of the things that we've been talking about for a long time is the stop-arm cameras. And it's fabulous to see those finally happening. The other thing that we've talked about a couple of times, but I don't know if it's ever kind of gotten any traction, but I did notice that Buffalo did it this year, is the parent, pay your parents to drive approach, parent transportation reimbursement. I noticed Buffalo started it this year with a pilot project. They liked, it was a very small, like they set it to like no more than, I don't know, a thousand parents or something, something like that. So that it wouldn't, so that they could pilot it. But it did seem like a possible solution to pull some of the pressure off because now it's, the drivers are the limiting factor, right? It's not actually the money. It's the drivers. So that might be a way for us to expand on drivers. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, and if, if it's extra work, I know you're doing a lot of work. I don't want extra work. But I was really surprised by the significant increase in ridership from last year to this year. Yes. I think it was CDT A. It was like, yeah, I wasn't surprised by the middle school shift because we've got more kids at North Albany and less kids at Hackett and Myers each year while we get to there. But the overall ridership was up a lot.
My, my guess is, I know Sped this year, the review I U P information, I know that part of it was review, part of it was removing certain transportation accommodations. So a lot of those students that last year were riding yellow bus would now only be eligible for CDT A.
So is our overall ridership, I didn't do this math, if you add our first student or elementary and secondary rider, eligible riders, is that kind of flattish or is it up? And if you don't know, that's fine. I just, I can do the math later. I just, that, that big increase was just surprising. But if it's kids moving from yellow to CDT A, that would make sense because our enrollment's not going like this. I mean, it's up a little, but it's not up a lot.
I do believe we have seen, I do believe we have seen ridership increase overall.
By the, by these numbers, it's up about two hundred, two hundred students.
Dr. Shatur?
Mostly in, mostly in the CDT A. Yellow buses a little bit down.
So my question's actually linked to what Ellen asked about. So how do the subs get on-boarded? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, not with, not with getting into the weeds of the thing, but is it a Google Maps that they follow? Or is it a route in some other way that they follow? Because the problem, the issue has been that when you have the subs, they're going on seven eighty-seven, completely different route, right? And so when they get on-boarded, do they get the fixed route, say, this is the road you're taking, no deviation?
Right.
Or where does Google take?
So what I would say is last year, we ran into that problem a lot where we were utilizing like travel drivers from other districts to come in who aren't familiar with Albany and kind of just, you know, filling, filling the gap. This year, unfortunately, we haven't been able to utilize travel drivers. It's just unfortunately, other hubs don't have the spare drivers to provide to us. So it's still Albany drivers that are already, you know, already on-boarded, already, already have a route. It's just now they're having to double up and they're just not familiar with their new assignment. So it's not that they don't know, you know, the different streets or which ways to take where the case may be. They're just not familiar with a particular address. For example, in Mrs. Frazier's case that we brought up, driver, you know, especially with being a little bit darker out, just not exactly sure of where the exact house is. And that's, that's what we're running into.
But the, the situation I was pointing is more between the middle school and the high school for, in the short trips, where they had no reason to go on seven eighty-seven.
That, uh, yeah. Right. Yeah, that's, that's certainly been a topic of discussion I've had with our. Right, right. Unfortunately, I can't speak to the thought process to taking the highway there. But I do know it's happened a couple of times now. It has been addressed both times. At the very least, it wasn't the same driver, not that that makes the situation any better. But yeah, they've, they've certainly been instructed to, to never use that route moving forward.
Some people do strange things sometimes.
Yeah, it's sort of like the, the truck drivers using Google Maps and then hitting the Glenville Bridge.
Right, yeah.
Second question that was CDT A related, some middle schools have the tripper buses that are accordion buses. And sometimes you don't get a driver or the bus doesn't show up. All the kids from the tripper, the, the accordion bus now get put into one single bus, which is a very crowded, unsafe situation. How can we fix that?
So those are the conversations I am having with CDT A is to figure out how we can combat their driver shortage. To be fair to them, I spend most of my time dealing with our yellow bus vendor. And I kind of give a little bit of a longer leash to CDT A. But just get granted the, given the P T S A meeting that I attended at Myers this year, I certainly got an insight into what their, what their struggles are. And that definitely was a piece of it, was dealing with the overcrowding. Unfortunately, right now, just given their lack of drivers, we, we, we don't have another driver to throw at the, at the problem. It's just holding the drivers that we do have accountable and making sure that they are following their routes as, as needed.
Because you just alluded to the middle school behaviors, right? Now you're taking twice the amount of kids with those behaviors and cramming them together.
Right.
It's like explosion waiting to happen.
For sure.
Okay. Ms. Wilson, I think you have a question.
I know, Damaris has something after me too. Just a comment. Thank you for your presentation. And we appreciate you outlining just like the, the series of things you have to navigate. I will state, you know, keep hope alive. And.
Thank you.
Yes. And I was going to ask about training you would recommend, but even that was sort of covered in depth, that there are additional training that you're trying and different skills that you're trying to bring on board.
Yeah, we're hoping the virtual training is really, is really going to help.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I, I would add too, the first serves that we, we mentioned, that, that's pretty extensive. It's, it's a commitment on both the district and the first student, but it's, it was, you know, a bunch of educators, you know, psychologists. So it, it's well-developed. It's, I, I say it's, it can be a little heavy. So we have to check commitment on, on everybody's end. But that is actually a, a fantastic process. So we're looking forward to going down that road.
Thank you. Ms. Mann, go ahead, please.
There was, there was some mention early on about you might have two kids on a bus together and you have to separate them. There's some kind of conflict.
Yeah.
Is it, I should note this, is it in our code of conduct, how you behave on a bus? What are like the natural logical consequences for acting out?
I think it's supposed to be the same as the question.
It, it is. It's a great, it's a great question.
At what point do we?
So I don't want to say unfortunately, but I don't have the authority to remove, suspend or really discipline any student. It would have to come from the building admin team. That is something that I am pushing for. You know, we certainly don't want to deny students' education or deny them a ride to school. But there certainly are times where students are impacting, you know, the environment for bust load of, bust load of other kiddos. So that is something that I am trying to hammer home with not only our school, our school building staff, but also our special education department as we do see an increase in behavioral problems upon some of those routes.
And, and may I, and I do know that with special education, there's a, for lack of a better word, a bit of a longer leash. I, I know that. But for some of these other issues, and I know we want to get our attendance up, I, I get that, but we're not doing students, we're doing students a disservice when we make accommodations while there are, while their negative behaviors happening. There's, there's a way to, uh, taking the can down the road.
Those are the conversations I'm having with some of the victims of, of some of the experiences on, on the, on the buses. The families are questioning me, you know, why is, you know, kiddo still allowed to ride? And it's just, that's a conversation meant for someone else.
I, I do want to say this, though. First of all, that situation, that's certainly not an Albany thing. As I move around the region, there's not one place we don't have that conversation. What I will say here though, is I think Dorette's connection to the team and maybe Tamika being on both sides if it helps. Our team here, I, I don't, I have some operations where our team's throwing their hands in the air and doesn't feel like they get to cooperate. That is not the case here. You know, there's no easy wand on this, but I, I will say for Dorette and Ron, our, our team knows that we can reach out and at least make some progress on that. It's not a wave it and everybody behaves wonderfully on the bus. But I, but I do feel this is a productive approach to it together. And candidly, I, you know, there's some other places I wouldn't say that about.
Very good. Other questions, comments?
And hopefully next time we address you, we're going to talk about electric buses.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Because I've been promising you electric buses for as long as I can.
Listen, I, I'm, I'm saying lots of prayers. I keep my fingers crossed, everything. So thank you all for, for the presentation and for your work in partnership with the district.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dorette, thank you very much. Okay. I know, but in a minute he might. Thank you, gentlemen. Colleagues, before we move on, I'm looking at the hour and I'm going to propose a couple of things. We'll need to get Mr. Lesko's attention. Mr. Lesko, hello, and good evening again. Now, before you start, I wanted to put this on the table. And first I wanted to get your, your thoughts on it. And then I want to come to the board. Is it possible, given the hour, or would you support this idea, that we move your communications presentation to our December twenty-first meeting? Would that be okay with you?
Absolutely.
Very good, sir. I'm never sure. I can, his face is just, me too, me too. I was very worried.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes. Now, I don't know if you, yes, well, we can take care of that. Okay. So let's go ahead and do that.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove the Communications and Operations Division report. I didn't read the title right, but close enough.
To.
Remove it. That's my amendment.
Okay, let's just remove it. We'll determine an agenda setting where to place it.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Shatur. All in favor? Well, hang on, I'm, I got a couple steps. All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lesko. Now, I have a second, thank you. Have a second question. We have Mr. or Superintendent Hawk Rider, we were going to come back to asking him questions on his district update. My proposal would be that again, we'd amend the agenda and since he's done that presentation, that we would submit questions via the communications tool, should you have any. Would that work for the board? And I see a hand, Ms. Cratchey, would you?
I'm going to make a move to, it, it, I don't remember if that was on the official agenda, but I'd like to make a move to do that thing.
Oh, to do, I like that. That's second. All in favor of moving or communicating questions related to the superintendent's or the district's report, those would come from the board to superintendent via the communications tool. And.
One quick question. When those questions get answered in a public meeting, the public hears about it, would these answers be presented somewhere?
So I think that's a great one. And a lot of those will be updates as well.
Yeah, we can, we can put that in a public facing document.
And the school board update would be the perfect place because those are all public.
Yes, BU. That, there we go. Thank you. Did I, we did not get the vote on that, did we? All in favor? That was, okay, I didn't see it. That is, that's unanimous. Okay, all right. Just make it.
Ah, gosh.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. All right.
Bobby's like, we're done, I'm out.
Now, folks, we, we talked about, discussed going back into exec session for the purpose of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, ABSEU.